To order the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, this Wednesday, June 17th at 6:30 PM. Would like to take this opportunity to ask board members and staff and public to silence tele- cell telephones so we won't be disrupted throughout our meeting. And at this point, I'll ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Present.
At this, at this point, we would go to approval of the consent calendar, but we're not going to do that because I need to move both items 2A and 2B off of the consent calendar. So what we are going to do then is address each one individually right now. We'll take item 2A, approval of minutes. Reason I pulled that off of the consent calendar, and I do have a reason, I just have to find it, is that on iPad page five, at the top of the special meeting, Board of Directors, it was, says it was called order at 6:30 PM, but that one was at 6:00 PM. Okay. And I, I think... That's it for item 2A, yes.
Will we approve the minutes as corrected?
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Item number 2B, the approval of collection, delivery, and placement of post-rock. I, I asked for it to be pulled off for a couple of reasons. One was, I wanted to know if you could, so I'll just get started on it. I wanted to know if you could provide us with a cost estimate of what we would spend in, in real dollars for the use of our equipment, fuel, and personnel labor to gather up the post-rock and drop them off and place them, or whatever we're going to do.
Now, he approximately three hundred dollars.
Well, I thought the boys' council were going to go and then remove them.
Just pick them up and hold them on their back, yeah.
And we would get a certain amount of time that would be invested to do that.
Okay, I think the only other concern I had, or question that I wanted to ask is, might be a little nitpicky, you might like this, Dustin, is that we take this post-rock over there, and like, we have some of it out here, and we stood it on edge. I don't know how, you know, real stable that is, but if we take it over there and we either drop it off on the ground, I don't know, or if we are the people that place it and we place it standing up, and maybe a section is five feet high, if, if it should fall over on a passer, passerby in two years down the road, are we going to be able to get the town of Paradise to give us a waiver that once we deliver and place the rock that are, and, and they accept it in that manner, that we're resolved from any further liability?
We can request it. It would be a matter of their decision whether they accept it or not. I, I wouldn't be too concerned about liability in that way, but the eventual liability would be in the act of delivery, you know, we backing out and run into something or someone. Two years down the road, you're hypothetically gave up, the district's not exposed in that situation.
Really? Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
But since we pulled it, maybe we ask our Eagle Scout candidate to tell us what you're going to be doing with the project at town hall. That way we'll be on it. And introduce yourself, please. Anthony, right?
Hi, my name is Anthony Lindsay, and I'm a Life Scout, Troop 316 of Paradise, and I'm 14 years old, and I'm going to, I'm going into my sophomore year at Paradise High School. And for my current Eagle Scout project, I am replacing the fly pole and redoing the landscaping in front of the Paradise Town Hall. So far, we have installed the 316 tall fly pole in the ground, and we have got rid of the existing ground cover that was there, and installed a drip irrigation system for the existing roses that have been there that we don't plan to remove. And for the landscaping, we've decided on drought-resistant plants and trees and ground cover and the post-rock. And we've received monetary donations from the community and donation of supplies from Paradise Garden Center and Mendon Nursery for the trees and the mulch. And I'm requesting that the Paradise Irrigation District generously donate the post-rock from our project, and your donation would be greatly appreciated by myself and the community we serve. Any questions?
Do you mind if you tell us about the program that's going to take place on the Fourth of July?
It's going to be, it's the first time the flag's going to go up the pole, and it's going to have a celebration of the flag going up on the Fourth of July.
At what time?
10:00 AM in the morning. I have a...
I know all these, I want to.
Okay.
Well, I think it's a very worthwhile project, and the Troop 6, 316, we just have had the good fortune to cross the street at the Elks, where now you're chartered through us, and they're doing all kinds of great things as a scout troop. So appreciate it. So I move that we approve item B under the post-rock delivery.
Read the motion, I'll let you...
There's a motion in the, right underneath it.
Authorizing the general manager?
Authorizing the general manager.
Okay. I move that we authorize the general manager to execute the collection, delivery, and placement of post-rocks that would be utilized by Boy Scout Troop 316 member Anthony Lindsay in completing a community service project.
Second.
Okay, I have a question. Are we going to run out of those?
How many times? I, I hope we don't run into...
You hope we do.
I hope we don't create anymore, but someday we do know. How many times?
Any further comments, questions?
I, I'll just add, as far as the, Dustin mentioned the liability during the collection and delivery process, and some comments are covered under our own Aqua JPA, since we're getting board approval, if we tried to venture this off without board approval, and that liability would have been questionable, or as far as coverage from JPA, but I appreciate the board hearing this and taking on.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask Jim, but really, he's on the staff, and he's been working with the Scouts, and he did come here tonight, so I know he's not afraid of speaking at home.
Just a little person.
Did you add anything that we may have missed?
Well, I really got behind Anthony because I think this is just a worthwhile project. I mean, it's great for the community, it's great for our nation. I mean, look at the youth coming up, and I just think, these are kind of things that we need to stand up for and be behind. That's why I always supported it, that's why I wrote the memo, and I'd really like to see the approval of this.
Thanks, Jim.
Any further?
These are positive things to talk about, since over across the street at the Elks, we chartered the 316 group there. They're doing several different things, and one of them that Paradise has lacked for quite some time is a place to dispose or burn retired American flags. And another young man like Anthony is building that in our new RV park area, and it's just going to be beautiful. So they're doing all kinds of wonderful things for our community. I congratulate you and your leaders, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, and thank you, Anthony. We will now move to the public participation section of our agenda. This is an, a time where we'll give individuals the opportunity to address the board about matters that are not scheduled on the agenda, although the board cannot take any action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time that they are addressed later in the, in the agenda. Right now, this is just open public participation for things that are not on the agenda, and I understand that we have a public member, would like to introduce himself, and Bill is going to read his prepared statement.
My name's Bruce Mulbyer. Do you want my address?
No.
Okay. I got a, a, something for, something for Bill to read.
Jordan, your thing afterwards.
Okay.
He's like, a lot of people, you know, deaf is, in public speaking, they look upon as a similar task, so he asked me to speak for him. I went out and visited on his property with him, he has a bonsai nursery across the street from me, he's actually in Doug's division, but it's just across the street, so I went over and visited and walked his property with him, and he showed me this letter at the time, and now I'll read it to you, and he's expectable to answer your questions. I have raised bonsai for the last 29 years. Bonsai, mainly azaleas and Japanese maples, are very unique and highly prized. The older the plant, the more it is worth. The plants are sold at shows and is a supplement to my social security. Currently, I have somewhere around 400 to 500 plants, and, both in containers and in the ground. Over the next few years, I will be reducing the number down. I tried last year to get a irrigation water rate for my nursery, but was told I didn't qualify because I wasn't large enough, and the plants are raised in pots. I understand our need to cut down on, on our water usage, and, and I am mulching my growing ground, landscape, and have turned off my lawn. I am currently adding drip irrigation on containers and landscape, all in an effort to reduce water usage. I have removed our swimming pool, although I can reduce my water usage. I feel 50% cutback is not really realistic and will prove to be a financial hardship. If I also have to pay usage fines, I called the PID office to ask for assistance on what to do and have not heard back from them. And you want to say something else, Bruce?
Uh, no, that's... Any, man, any questions?
How many units are you using a month?
My last, so I just got yesterday was, uh...
You want your phone?
I got my phone.
Sixty...
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one. Sixty-one a month?
Yeah.
And how many did, do you know what you used in 2013?
Uh... Somewhere in here, you know. In 2013, your household used 36,500 gallons per month, or 1,203 gallons a day. During 2014, household averaged 36,278 gallons per month, or 1,193 gallons per day. This year, your budgeted usage is 18,295 gallons per month, or 601 gallons per day. About 50% of your 2013 usage. Please make a note of your budgeted water target.
Thank you. I have cut back, I've cut back actually quite a bit. I just don't know what else I can do.
I visited and watched his property with him, saw the new watering system put, he's put in other things he's done on his property, and actually, he was scared when the tone of the letter came out, reducing, you know, 20, he's in the 20% range, he's reducing 50% of our fines and what have you. He has a beautiful nursery, and he does sell nursery products commercially. So I totally wonder if options might be working with staff and office to get on either a business thing or as an ad use, something like that to go with it. His nursery stock is well over $10,000 in value to him, and he does have an income from it every year, so it is a business, a very large business. So I thought it'd be nice if he, and he's concerned, so it's a good place to present this to the board as a whole. And do you have anything more you want to say, Bruce?
I understand we need to cut, cut back, and I've really made an effort to do that, and whether I can make 50% or not, I don't know. That's a, that's quite a goal.
Bruce, when did the, when did the new watering system, when did you do your, when did you, when did you do your new watering system?
Uh, actually, I started last year, and I changed it because it wasn't working good, so I went to a different system this year, which seems to be working better.
What was last month's usage, Bill? Did we... Did you assess the 61...
61.
61 units, well, we need 40, we request 60.
How far was, what was he requested? How many units?
I'm going to get the left.
You've got to get down to 18,000. You've got to get down to 18,000 or 750.
He was, let's see, 18,000 gallons from him to 60, 50% or 2,000, you know, so he can use, I guess, down to 601 gallons a day. Should I bring it up? Should it come up?
105,000, 750.
Okay, well, at, at this point, there's two things that are happening here. One is the five minutes is expired, and number two is, this is very close to an agenda item that we have in regard to the resolution, the, the public hearing in a, about the fines, about the issues that we're coming up with. So at this point, I think I will cease the public comment on this, but you're more than welcome to stay if you would like to participate and provide comments for us when we get around to Agenda Item 6A and I, and 6A double I.
Okay.
Which will be coming up shortly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, George?
Do you like me to respond to the non-agenda item portion of that?
Well, the board can't take any action, but you can provide some clarification if you would like.
Yeah, I'm not sure why he didn't get a call back from the office. I'm a little surprised at that. I'm not sure what happened there, but he was probably told, or if he would have been called back, he was told what we've been telling many people, kind of what I put in my board memo. If he follows the outdoor watering rules that we have prescribed, that the board approved, then that's what we're asking for. The 50% is the target in most cases, most, most of the cases, we feel that if those people follow the outdoor watering guidelines we have, they're going to come close or reach that 50%, and that's what we've kind of seen. So in his case, if he's low-flow, drip irrigation for all of his trees, that even gets you out of the, the days of the week and, and the other requirements, so.
I, I water them, brush them every day, maybe water.
And if that's low-flow, if you're delivering it with low-flow or hand-watering, that's acceptable.
Okay. Thank... Thank you for the clarification, George. Are there any other public members that would like to address us about a topic that is not on the agenda?
I got one, I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll let him speak since he jumped up there, and, and then you can tell me what it is, and I'll let you know.
You want to start the clock? I got to try and stay under five minutes, you know.
Okay.
Ward, hey, real, this time, for this item, on behalf of the Paradise Garden Club, as you know, you helped us, and we really much appreciate that. On June 6th and 7th, we did have our annual Paradise Garden Club tour, featuring six gardens, seven different properties, six gardens, all of which posted the blue and white Paradise Saves Water signs, because all of them were, in fact. People were amazed as they toured the gardens to find out that these attractive yards were actually saving water, and based on the information I received back from George about the different properties, one of them, as much as 70%. That's pretty impressive, and people thought, okay, I guess there's a lot that we can do to get to that point. When we talked about the difference between where we were last year in Butte County, looking at what we could accomplish in our county, PID and Paradise was the leader in accomplishing 20% a month or the 25% a month. We're the only one in the county that did that. This year, we're looking at 36%. Everybody in the garden club has supported me in saying, yes, we believe our town, our community, PID and the garden club together, can help get us to the 36% savings. And the people who are on the tour and helping to sponsor Aquahawk solely and sorely convinced people that they have got to get on Aquahawk. And I don't know what the sign-ups have been since the end of our garden tour up through now, but I know at least five people who were at one of our meetings just this week said, if it wasn't for Aquahawk, I wouldn't understand where I was and what I'm doing now, and I thank you so much for helping us get to that point. Following that, on the 8th, the California Garden Clubs Incorporated held their annual conference, and that was in Reno this year, because Nevada doesn't have any state garden clubs, the clubs in Nevada belong to the California clubs. So while we were there, and I was one of the delegates, a voting delegate for the Paradise Garden Club, while we were there, we heard feedback from people from all around the state that had heard that there were some groups in Northern California that were already meeting, and as we got into Tuesday, the second day, they were finding out that the part of Northern California where water savings was actually taking place was in Butte County, and more specifically, in the town of Paradise. Several people were there that had heard about Chico and sort of the embarrassment that Cal Water was not able to provide last year enough information for them to even reach anywhere as close to 20%, but PID and the town of Paradise, Paradise Garden Club included, was one of the leaders in that effort. So we got some pretty positive feedback about that, and of course, us partnering together is part of how we get to that point. I also wanted to bring you up to date that there are some other things that are going to be taking place in the future, of which the Paradise Garden Club has had some responsibility for in the past. For instance, the, we have seen the writing on the wall, more or less, or in the street, that we're not supposed to be watering medians. The town of Paradise has stopped irrigating the medians that they provide the water for, and that includes both the triangles on Skyway. We have done the maintenance and provided the plants for that, but without water, pretty much everything there is going to die. Now, we've committed to the town that when we have water again, and they're going to turn the irrigation back on, we will again assume responsibility for that. But in the meantime, we pretty much have to know that we're partnering to say, okay, some things are just going to have to die. Along those lines, we think that's happening in some people's yards. You see lawns now with the blue and white signs, uh, blue and signs on them, saving water, because the lawn is going to die. Guess what? When it rains, it won't look so bad, it'll come back. We're helping people to understand that there are a lot of things that we can do as gardeners and homeowners to reach the 36%. And I just wanted to remind you that as we partner together, what we're doing actually works. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ward. What, what did you want to talk about, sir?
Uh, do you understand?
Well, you can just tell me, and I'll let you know whether it's on the agenda.
Um, it's, mine's about, I have a house that has two residences, a property with two residents that are separately metered everywhere except for water, except for address and whatnot, and they're getting treated at one unit, and it's getting, it was told me, and I got a letter actually treated that, and they cut my usage for that property by 50%, but I pay about $45 a month normally for two houses, which is about, I, I think, I think it's about $10 a month in actual usage, so it seems pretty, pretty low for two separate households, and so I'm trying to figure out how I can meet that, or if maybe it just needs to get freed, because I know a couple of years ago, it got freed, uh, my, my meter got redone, the, the billing got redone to where houses that had less than three units were converted to a single tent, a usage thing, and now before all this, all the steps are coming up with the, with the state government, so.
Okay, I, I think I'll ask you to hold off, because we're going to move quickly into this other item here. There's going to be a public hearing in regard to the excess water use ordinances that we come up, and I think that those would be appropriate comments to make at that time. I'll give you another opportunity then. Thank you very much. Any, any other public participation at this time for items not on the agenda? There being none, we will move on to item four, which is the approval of the checks, of the made checks to consider approval, and typically, we, we will do what we typically do. This time, I'll start with Larry, and say, Larry, you, you get to pick off all the cherries there about what you'd like to ask questions about.
Okay. First one is iPad page 22, vendor econ. We paid him 46,000, and I'm wondering, I can't forget what the total contract was told, how much? 1.2, and how far along percentage-wise are we?
That's in Kevin's report?
Is it? Okay.
I'll give you a number, it's approximately, popping up to 10%.
10%, okay. Page 25, drug and alcohol testing division, and we paid 156 dollars. For how many people was that?
I don't know, was that one or...
Which one is it?
DMV physicals, a drug and, it's page 25.
One or two, can't be more than that.
And I'm not sure how many individuals that was, because we are hiring quite a few of the temps are coming on, and I know two just came on board, and, but before that, one did, so it might just be one.
One?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, page 26, foothill mill and lumber. It's spray nozzles, is that the ones we're selling to the, to our customers? And how many, what was the quantity on that?
About 500.
500, okay. On page 27, Hertz Equipment Rental. It says, excavator rental for the shop.
That's the department, the shop rented it.
For what purpose?
For a pipeline project.
To excavate.
The what?
For the pipeline project.
Oh, okay, good. Oh, you get charged to the shop, huh? Okay. I, I thought, would have thought I got charged for the field.
It'll get charged to the job ultimately.
Field, the field is the shop.
Oh, okay.
You have the shop and then, and treatment plant, so those are three.
Okay, on page 30, North State Aggregate. How many feet is the mill? How many feet of pipe are we replacing on the mill?
Um, we're, I think the total of all of those, because it's more than just the mill, there's a couple of job numbers associated with it, so 2,500 feet, something like that.
2,500, okay. Page 34, what does SWRCB stand for?
Resources Control Board.
Control Board, okay. On page 37, what was the total cost of the pilot? The pilot thing? We planned, we paid 20,000 here.
It was 100,000, what's next?
90,000. 90,000, okay. And the last one is on Zenner. How many, we bought meter firefly? Firefly, 100, okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Almost 5,000.
Almost 5,000 feet on those, all those projects.
On the, okay, it's, it's a big one, and I just, I keep, a lot of people are talking to me about it, and that's why I was wondering.
Well, I'll just remind you that it's a really good project for us, because the town's going to do an overlay after we're done, so we're, we're not having any curb pavement restoration costs on that project.
And you're not going to have to support some of it?
Nope. PG&E paid for it already.
Okay, good.
Well, they still might ask us. Sep, do you have items?
Larry got mine, so...
Doug, your turn.
Yes, I have a couple. On page 22, iPad 22, I noticed that we had, our workman's comp was 39,000, how many, is that a quarter? A quarter, okay. So we're looking at $40,000 per quarter, or 120 per year, okay. And I would imagine that's quite a bit cheaper through the ACWA and all that other, because of the rates.
We've noticed that it's, we feel like it's cheaper based on what we've...
Yes, I have a couple. On page 22, iPad 22, I noticed that we had, our workman's comp was 39,000. How many, is that a quarter? A quarter, okay. So we're looking at $40,000 per quarter, or 120 per year, okay. And I would imagine that's quite a bit cheaper through the ACWA and all that other, because of the rates.
We've noticed that it's, we feel like it's cheaper based on what we've got.
And we're, our crew is pretty accident-free, aren't they?
We, we have some on there.
Yeah, we've, we've got some history of, it's mostly bigger.
Well, you know, the type of work that we do, the ditch and all over is pretty hazardous for strains at that particular point. And then, on iPad 24, there might be focal adjustment here. I noticed that we had with the CDF, $2,000 for the shaded fuel break. Is that for convict crews? It's on page 24, iPad 24.
Department of Forestry.
Yeah, Department of Forestry, the fire protection.
Yeah, that's probably a payment to the Cal, Cal Fire, or whatever their new name is.
For the convict crews?
Yes.
Okay, good. And what, what were they basically doing? I mean, were we hauling, we haven't been able to do much burning this year, have we?
Well, that, that's from, that was from work earlier in the year.
Okay, earlier?
Takes them a while to get us billing.
Okay. And then I wanted some clarification. On 27, we have bleach tanks. Now, that's that new system we're going to away from the chlorine gas.
Correct.
Yeah, good. And so those are the tanks that we needed, and they were $73,000.
Yes.
What's the life of those? Do you remember? What, what life estimate do they?
Um, I don't know. I would guess 20 years.
20, something like that, I would imagine. Particularly if they're inside.
Well, they're not inside.
They're outside, but the fiber.
But they're fiberglass.
Well, yeah.
I think that's what Jim said last time.
Same page on 27, I had a question to Larry ask that, being in equipment my entire life, and I've asked this before because we've always had some excavator rental, what size of an excavator is that?
It's a, I don't, it's not a super big one. It's a, it's on the smallest.
But it's not like a little Bobcat or one of those?
It's not as small as a Bobcat.
Okay.
It's a track excavator.
Well, you know, see, so it's 2,800, that's most likely for a month.
Yeah.
And it's a $150,000 unit.
At least.
At least that much, so we'd have a hard time owning it. So, ready against the wise, and you take it back and buy it as wear and tear. And then I have one more. On the internal revenue, 56,000 on page 28 on here. Most of that, and I'll ask Kevin of this here, most of that is just passing through, right?
I can see it's all of that.
All of it is passing through. We have, uh.
That's all from withholding from the employees.
Yeah, but in other words, we withdraw, hold it from the employee, and then we pay it to the IRS. Okay. Good. And I had one more highlighted here. Oh. Our legal fees has 13,800. How much of that is the drought? Dustin, what do you say? How much of that is the drought? We have a breakdown on your.
Yeah, you have.
Oh, did you have any?
Yeah, but you know, that's not going to match up to the 13. Is this the, you have, that one's, it's.
I'd be guessing, um, I would say a fair percentage, you know, between.
How much of a percentage? Would you, wild guess?
So this is from two months ago, Kevin?
That's going to be from your, yeah, two months of work.
April work.
Yeah. So April was a lot of the state mandated conservation, a lot of work, three letters, board hearing.
Then you attended some meetings and stuff.
Right.
Representing us, what you had to do. Good. Now, we'll figure that out. Okay, one more.
No, I was just going to comment, I've got the, turning the building there, and the data on the billing base, May 31st, for the 13,000 came, received on June the 9th.
But the work, the work that you're looking at is for the prior, we haven't paid it yet. Or we, we paid it, but it's not going to be showing up in the checks. That's the most current.
Shopen, June.
One more. Mr. President, one more that I'd like to ask if it's credit. On iPad 44, and that is a summary, I call it a summary, or expense account report, that's for 11-month period of 7/114 to 5/3115. We spent $6,373,417. Now, that's for parts and pieces, that's no salaries. Some retirements in there, benefits and all that, but as far as.
A portion of salaries because we're paying the withholding out of that also.
Well, yeah, withholding, but, yeah. But it's for, most of that is just parts and pieces.
Correct.
Like we've gone through here.
And contract.
So, for, for the record, for the community, our service fee and all of that, go, 6 million of it went back into our community. Right?
Well, you've got.
Well, some, some community.
You've got a lot of capital.
In the world.
Our largest, remember, our largest expense is salaries, which you hoping goes back into the community?
Right.
And then debt service, which does not go back into the community.
Yeah, well, in good times, when everything is in receipts-wise, and all the expenses are out, we hope to have half a million dollars left over. And it's not going to happen this year because of the drought and the non-usage out here. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Bill, do you have items to bring up?
Yeah, I just have, everybody's picked up most of the things, but I'm back on page 44 of the last page. And, at any rate, hardly read it on my screen, I guess you can read it. Inventory clearance, 20,414, 20,000. That's money we paid out. What was, or something, what happened there?
It's inventory. So it's, it's when we purchase inventory for the shop.
Yeah.
That's where it goes to that account.
Okay, so this is where you bought pipe and what have you?
Fittings, pipes, uh, fireflies go in there, um, anything that, that we inventory goes into that account.
It's called inventory clearance. That seems odd to me. It's like you've sold the inventory.
That's just the way the system was set up.
Oh, okay.
That's, they named it.
Of course, you didn't have anything to do with that, right?
No, that one was, they're a little, they're a little finicky on their inventory, on how it's set up, so.
Oh, okay.
On how it goes in and comes out, so I try not to fight that one.
The other one is Dustin's bill. Is there a way, Dustin, when you, I've got the summary here and everything, but I was trying to pull out different things, items on your bill, like what went to this part or that? And you list it by days and what you do, but would it be possible to actually get sort of a, a set of broad summary, pull out like what time has been spent on the different projects themselves, and sort of a minor summary, like on the water thing we're going to consider later tonight?
Uh, yeah, that is possible. It's, um, actually just a matter, and you can notify me, but it's better to notify my bookkeeper, say we want a new account for whatever. And that way.
But it is possible to do that? That's possible for you, your object to do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think your report would be more valuable with that done, because otherwise, I was going through and trying to figure out which went where, and I really didn't know. I circled things and so forth.
Will that most likely cost us more money?
No, no.
It's just not just accounts.
It just is a matter of where we post time. The bookkeeping function not, doesn't take any more.
It's not the $200, or how much do you charge us an hour?
Let's see.
About 40 years ago.
260.
260, okay.
But that rate has gone up, I believe. No, that's not, that is the new rate.
Who may?
Okay, my last comment concerns legal, and it's on page 44. And you go up near the top, it says legal, and if I got my line straight, it says 123,030 and $30 and 90 cents from July 1st, 2014 to May 31st. Did I get it right, Kevin? Okay, so that's, that's my only comment. That's how much total we spent, since we haven't hired anybody else through Dustin's business.
Okay, thank you. The only comment that I have left to bring up is just a kind of a reminder to people about what we spend for our health insurance, and that is on page 22 of the iPad. We paid the bill for 67,860 dollars, and that's a major chunk of money that goes out for the health insurance for our employees.
Our employees have excellent health insurance, and it's being treated as one with health insurance, and it's very valuable to board members.
Anyhow, we're, we're finished with that. We have no old business for item, oh, we're going to have to do it.
Make a motion?
And approval.
All right. Move to approval of general fund check numbers 47881 through 48044 for the month of May 2015 totaling 610,653.38. Exclusive avoided check numbers 47881 to 479.9, 47923, and 47943. And authorize, authorization of similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of June 2015.
Second. Any further comments or questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, passes 5-0.
Ken, I'd like to make a motion before we go to the next item.
Where, you can't make a motion until we're on the topic.
No, I don't want to make a motion on moving pilots.
No.
Make a request?
Uh, we're going to move to new business.
No, don't tell me no. It's, it's very legal to do that. We've done it before as a board. So I would like to make a motion.
We're going to move to item 6A in regard.
I would like to make a motion.
To the excess water use ordinance.
Move 7A, the committee reports, to just above all business. I think it's very valuable.
Okay, I'm not, I don't care what you think at this point.
I'm going to continue talking.
Well, you can.
You're just the presiding officer, and you have one vote.
And we don't vote about the order of our agenda.
We have changed the order of the agenda many times.
I am the one that's controlling it.
Yeah. And I'm asking for a vote on moving 7A.
So we're going to open the public hearing in accordance with Water Code Section 375A.
I think we hold our president in contempt.
To consider public input and comments regarding implementation of enforcement procedures and fines, penalties for water conservation measures.
It's very important to the public here that we have these committee reports before we go into other business, and that's why I'm asking for it to be there. They influence other business on the agenda.
George, would you give us a, an introduction, since I've opened this public hearing, and let us know how we're going to go about doing it, what we're looking to accomplish, so then we can come back out of the public hearing? And then take the next item, which would be consider adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, and I'll let Dustin jump in as he sees appropriate. This is the, the second phase of our water conservation program, and that is adopting a penalty ordinance that would come into play for people that didn't comply with our water conservation program. What you have is, um, my best estimate of, of committee edits on this ordinance, it's fully, we'll have a Word document we can put up for changes, other things. Dustin probably has a couple of things to add in. He wasn't available when we put this final draft out. But, but I want to take time to, to talk it through a little bit about how this, how this would work in the real world. Before we ever even get to this phase, we, we receive complaints on a regular basis from both anonymous and not anonymous through our hotline, et cetera. We respond to those complaints. We, we go out, um, we have door hangers to inform people that they, you know, what's wrong and what the problem is. So before we ever got to these penalty phases, um, there's going to be a lot of dialogue with the individual person. This is really going to be exercised in extreme cases that we would ever need it. People that just refuse to cooperate, to be honest with you. As far as, I'll make it clear for everyone, and, and going back to the one gentleman's comment about calling in right after he got the letter, I was going to report to this in my manager's report, but it's more important here. When we sent our 20 percent letters out, um, it showed up to most people on a Friday, and then, um, so come Monday morning, our phones were ringing off the hook. So if you left a message and we didn't get back to you, it was the pure volume of numbers. We sent out 2,000 letters, and we only have four staff that can even answer the phone, so it was ringing off the hook. And we did our best to answer people's questions. We set up, um, site visits for some people. We scheduled some people for site visits to help them figure out what their water use is and why they were so high, and what the situation was. The customer service brought up the people's Aqua Hawk accounts while they were on the phone most of the time and helped them walk through what the issue may be. But as far as the ordinance goes, the only thing, unless I'm directed otherwise by the board, the only time this is going to come into play is violations of the ordinance related to outdoor watering requirements. So this ordinance is not going to be used because you only got 48 percent savings instead of 50, or maybe you only got 10 percent savings instead of 50. If you follow our odd-even-day watering schedule, 15-minute station time limits, um, all of the other various things, no wa, no water running down the streets, probably one of the key ones we deal with a lot, those types of things. If you comply with all of those, we think most people will get to 50 percent, but if they don't, that's okay. Um, we, we're, we're trying to be fair, and the other thing we're telling everybody is save your trees, save your shrubs. We do not want you to lose those. One, for fire protection, and two, because it's a huge investment for many of our residents. The lawn can go brown. It's going to need to go brown for a lot of people to actually get close to their goal. And the lawn will come back. It, it will survive in most cases. So, so just as we enter into this whole discussion about the process and the penalty phases, et cetera, um, I want everyone to know that this is focused on the actions in the program and people that will just flat-out refuse to comply with those type of rules. There'll be multiple discussions before it ever gets to step one, and it's definitely even more before it got to the point where we're actually going to be fining them $100.
I, I just want to make sure I clearly understood that. So without a, an infraction of the rules that we've established already, there won't be a fine for non-compliance with the percentage reduction.
Correct.
Only if somebody breaks the rules, and then we go through this progressive stepping phase, would there be a fine for not meeting the goal.
Yes.
What happens if people break the rules but don't exceed, but meet their goal about reducing water?
It'll still apply. Those, those outdoor conservation, uh, program we adopted, they're all just good business, smart things everyone needs, should be doing anyhow. Because there'll be instances where somebody could have had a leak in 2013, and they could have had a leak for a long time that threw them into this program. Well, likely, when they come to 2015 and they fix that leak, they're not going to have any trouble meeting their 50 percent. But that doesn't give them carte blanche to let their sprinklers go out into the street.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Common sense deal there then.
I can add a few things. Um, I just want to give further background about why you're here today, why you're asked to consider this. We are in a drought, obviously. Paradise is relatively blessed that we are better off than most other areas of the state as far as water supply. So on April 1, we, staff and, and myself, were proposing to you a voluntary 20 percent reduction. And coincidentally, the governor, also on April 1, came out with an executive order that mandated a 25 percent, what we thought at the time may have been across the board 25 percent. So we very quickly modified voluntary 20 percent into a mandatory 25 percent. You adopted that as a board on April 1. We then got kicked to the water board, and the water board, during the month of April, up until its meeting on May 5th, ended up massaging those requirements, and they came up with a staged conservation target. So depending on where you land in the state, you're anywhere from 8 percent on the low So depending on where you land in the state, you're anywhere from eight percent on the low side to a, a high of thirty-six percent. And Paradise Irrigation District is in the thirty-six percent category. So on, uh, May twentieth, uh, you as a board considered a revised version of what you adopted on May one. To go ahead and try to implement a thirty-six percent reduction. And paragraph nine of your resolution directed myself in coordination with George. To draft an excess water use ordinance as part of this package to try to meet the state mandated thirty-six percent. Um, so we did that. George and I conferred. We came up with a draft that we thought was ready for unveiling before the Water Conservation Committee. And, uh, we had a very lively discussion there. I see many members of the public that are here tonight that were also at that committee meeting. Some of the revisions there that you see are as a result of the committee input and public input at that, uh, meeting. Um, and the committee unanimously voted to, uh, bring it to the board for further consideration. So that's why we're there, why we're here tonight.
I would like to interject something.
Sure, go ahead.
Board voted unanimously to bring it to the board, but with no recommendation. The board did, the committee did not recommend this part. We said the board will decide in what we're doing now. So the committee brought a unanimous recommendation that we didn't have a recommendation for this.
Was that the, basically the board consider the ordinance? So there's a couple reasons why you're being asked to consider this. One is without this, I'll, I'll call it an enforcement tool. Without it, if you have somebody that is really thumbing their nose at the district, which is really who we're concerned about. Hopefully there isn't gonna be anybody, anybody like that, but, um, if we have somebody that just insists on washing their sidewalk. And despite repeated warnings, they continue to do it. The only recourse in what you currently have adopted, your water conservation program, is referral to the, um, uh, District Attorney's Office. And we didn't think that was a very realistic or fair remedy for dealing with those types of, uh, people. So this is kind of a less blunt approach. It involves more interaction with, um, the violating party. And then it allows kind of a staged approach. So you don't immediately have to go to the District Attorney's Office. You can kind of ratchet up in the enforcement, so to speak. Um, the second reason I think you wanna consider this is because I think there's a fair chance the state is gonna mandate. Some kind of enforcement type process on local agencies that fail to meet their specific conservation target. And if that's the case, they're gonna have a remedy process that we may not like. In fact, I could almost guarantee we, we won't like it. Um, so this is attempt, an attempt to kind of get out ahead of the state, adopt something that we think works, that has a lot of discretion built into it. Um, you know, as George said, we don't, staff is not looking to, um, make this into some kind of moneymaker. This is really reserved for the worst offenders that just aren't listening to reason. Um, go ahead, Bill.
In the committee meeting, when I asked if this was mandated by the state, what was your reply?
Not yet.
And then South Feather, what are they doing?
South Feather Water and Power Agency, they're, uh, one of my other clients. Uh, they, um, are also in the thirty-six percent tier. What they're doing is they are kind of, um, consciously objecting to the state. But they're in a slightly better position. They have a raw water and a treated water system. The state mandate, um, is, is kind of a one size fits all approach and says you shall save thirty-six percent only on your treated water side. Which is silly when you have a combination raw water, treated water system. You literally have one reservoir serving treatment plant or serving the ditch that serves ag customers. So what South Feather is choosing to do is say, we're gonna ask our treated water customers to save twenty percent. We're gonna make up the balance of the thirty-six percent with our, a reduction, conservation effort with our raw, raw water customers. And at the end of the year, our reservoirs are gonna be thirty-six percent, whatever that equates to, in acre feet higher. Yes.
They haven't mandated any fines or anything. And according to the man I talked to today, he said they have no plan on mandating any system of fines in their district. Is that true?
That's true. Nevada Irrigation District, another one of my clients, they're in the thirty-six percent tier. Um, they're gonna be considering probably in July, um, an ordinance along these lines. So there's, there's a popery of water suppliers out there. So, many are considering ordinances just like you are tonight. Others, um, are not yet there.
Okay, do we have any other staff input at this particular time?
I'll just reiterate again, this is for the worst of the worst offenders. We're not looking for any more work. Not interested in any more work. This is, we've had a great, uh, process last year with the door hangers. We got great response from almost every customer. Fixing their problems, um, understanding the communities, you know, they need to, to, to do their part in the community. I don't see this being used much, if at all. But I think we need the tool, uh, in case we need it. And I think we need the tool for the reasons Dustin said. We don't want the state telling us what our program's gonna be. We should be adopting it ourselves.
Okay. Go ahead.
What is the definition of outside watering?
I don't, it's in the program.
Is it?
Yeah.
Cause I was wondering like this gentleman with a bonsai, I mean, he could move his bonsai inside and water them, then it wouldn't be outside.
If it was in a greenhouse, it wouldn't be outdoor.
Right.
But, but for the same reason, if he's on a drip system.
It'll be okay.
We accommodated that. He could water every day. He can water multiple hours.
He has, he has greenhouses and shade houses.
So then it wouldn't be outside watering.
Yeah, well, I'm getting ready to open it up to the public.
I'd like to comment some more.
Go ahead.
We're talking about a fifteen percent increase in savings. Last year was a twenty-one percent we saved as a district, or thereabouts. So we're asking, asking the people in the district to save another fifteen percent. And that should be well within it. I'm one of the twenty percenters and I think I can meet the goals of the district as given. I don't think this rules is something we wanna do now. Maybe in July or after we get this month's feedback from the state on how we did on reducing water use. I think the policy of the district last year worked very well without any, uh, of things like this fines and so forth. And we asked people in the district to voluntarily cut their water supply. Everybody I've talked to from people are telling me they're making their toilets yellow before they flush them and, and other things. And one of the things we brought up at the committee meeting was using gray water and how that could be helped to reuse. And the district didn't take a position or anything on it, but there is good information on the internet. Of course, you have to feed through it. But there's a lot of ways we can conserve and meet the goals that we have. And we really won't know what we've done until the end of June. That's gonna be the first time the state's going to have the actual figures on how well the irrigation district did. I, I just have a big problem with fines and so forth. I've had a lot of people talk to me, including family members that are scared. Because of this fine system or the proposal of it. Not even, they haven't seen this one. They've just seen the original one that came out. They mentioned that it could be fined and so forth. I, I just don't think it's necessary for this district to do it. South Feather has its own way, but it's relying on their customers to cut the water. And they're helping them every way they can, like we have been doing in the past. We do it with signs, public relations. Everything we do, talking to people, we've had educational meetings in the past. And I think all we need to do is increase the educational meetings, explain what we're trying to meet. And keep in mind, we're really asking for you to cut as a district at home, or the state is mandating fifteen percent. The state is not mandating these rules. If they may mandate it down the road, but at the present time, they're not. And I called the water board in Redding today and I couldn't talk to the right person. So I don't know what the scuttlebutt is on these kind of rules coming down. We've been told by Dustin that it's something that may happen. He's not a hundred percent positive it's gonna happen. Dustin has a good handle on it. It may come. But I would think we'd be wise as a district to just table this thing for thirty days, see what our June reports are. See what the state of California wants us to do, if anything, and go on. And I also understand that they've had difficulty getting, I don't know if this is true. Getting things through the legislature where they will have the power to come to the districts and say they have to have fines. And I don't, I don't like the administration of it, the way it's written up and so forth. Because the judge and jury is the general manager, the way it's written, it's not a thing.
Oh, it's not. Let me clarify that. Um, there is no judge and jury that's the general manager in any way, shape or form. Because during committee input and we talked through the process, it was understood that I'm probably gonna have to be involved. No staff member's gonna wanna be handing out two and four hundred dollar, or two hundred and five hundred dollar fines without being known about it. Well, then I can't be impartial. So I'm not the judge and jury. The hearing officer will most likely be the chief financial officer. Um, there's language for me to appoint someone else. That's because he's not here every day. And then at my insistence to Dustin, there's a section in there that if they don't like that answer, they come to the full board, which wasn't even in the original, uh, option. So I just wanna be perfectly clear. This is not me, judge and jury, cause I'm gonna have to be the one helping staff administer it.
Thank you. Doug, did you have a?
Yes, I had a couple of questions, uh, or comments on that. I think one of the reasons that Director Kellon wanted to change the committee reports is because one of the big ones pertaining to this agenda is what we accomplished. At our June fourth Conservation Committee. George gave us several tasks and as Dustin mentioned, we had a lively discussion on it. And getting to the one that we have, you have, we have it on the board, one of the things that came out of that discussion with some law enforcement officers were there, some retired and others. Changing it from enforcement officer to compliance officer. That came out of that committee. And then we came up there with a hearing officer as a chief financial officer in this point. And like you were saying, George, it's for the worst of the worst, right? Okay, so before the June fourth meeting, like two or three days before that, trying to be prepared for the meetings, which I always try to do. I actually went to the Paradise Police Department and interviewed them because you're issuing a ticket. Exactly the same type of a ticket for a fine, whether it's a parking ticket or any other thing, you know? And some of the other things that I've been involved with in my life, you generally have a sworn officer issue that. And then it goes to the court at this particular point. Now, they mentioned that the police, well, I didn't talk to the chief or any of that. I would just talk to some of the other people and they were there. I kinda think they were trying to figure out where the hell I was coming from. But anyway, I just introduced myself and said I was trying to get clarification on it. The State Department sees some code violation. They are not going to put the guy under arrest or issue it. They go to the code officer and he comes and, or she, whatever it is, comes and puts that out. So I have some kind of the question, and I too, you have it up here, on here. Delegated and it's read by the general manager to enforce the provisions of this ordinance. Georgia, you, you're gonna appoint somebody. We have a great staff to appoint. But are they going to have some training? Are they gonna be, cause there's a, I, I did some curriculum, worked at Butte College for a number of years in a curriculum committee. And part of it had to do with the public service area. And I know we put a class in, and I think it was called the Power to Arrest. And anybody that's gonna go out and arrest somebody, and you're arresting them here, that's what you said we were, we're issuing a ticket. Now, the first one is a warning, just like my son got coming up the hill the other day after his party, George. And he got a nice warning, you know? But anyway, the second time, he's gonna pay a fine, or we're gonna pay a fine. So the, the, we called that the Power to Arrest. That was twenty-seven years ago. These, because the worst of the worst you're talking about, whoever does this is gonna have to call the police to get a backup. Because they won't take it generally. And it's amazing how people respond to badges, or at least they did before all these other carries that were going on. Yes, I'm gonna finish up here. So anyway, I think we're a little premature with this type of thing. I really do. I think we are. A little premature.
Well, they would certainly get training.
But they, but they gotta have some power behind the training, George. And for some screwball reason, that badge does that.
These people will be dealing with this. They deal with our unhappy customers on a daily basis.
But they don't, they don't arrest them, George. They're gonna be, I've listened to them here.
In the expectations of the district and the process and utmost requirement of their safety.
But they don't arrest them. That's a different thing there.
Okay, I, I wanna get to the legal definition. Are we gonna be arresting people if we send them a fine?
This is an administrative citation.
Right.
So it.
They're not arrested, Doug. Or can we turn that room into a jail there?
We're probably not gonna be hand serving it.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll get back under control. Kevin?
These people that are gonna be administering this, are doing our shut offs currently. And I can tell you right now that a person would be more upset, I can guarantee you, with giving their water shut off and not having water than having a hundred dollar fine now. I can guarantee you on that. So I can guarantee that our people are more than well qualified and they will be trained in all the ordinances that they will be.
Okay, cause they, they had better be. One more thing. Go to page fifty-one, eight, okay?
Fifty-one or eight?
Fifty-one, item eight. Write to judicial review. Okay, it's right down here with the second one up from bottom here. Anytime that you can resolve yourself by going to the superior court, that's the cops.
No, it isn't.
The hell it isn't.
It's a civil, if it's a civil suit.
Yes. Okay, well then, well, that's why we need to get this all clarified. Because Dustin at the committee, the core, uh, the Conservation Committee, you said we were actually instituting a fine system and arrest.
Don't think I said arrest.
I asked you then, and he said, that's what I thought you said.
If I did, I misspoke.
Okay.
This is an administrative process. It's a civil process. And let's make sure you're clear on the due process before you, a person aggrieved, a person that has received one of these citations, goes to Superior Court. You've had at least probably a, a verbal warning. You've had a written warning with no penalty attached to it. You've had twenty, at least twenty-four hours to cure whatever the offending practice is. Then you've gotten a, gotten a second citation. That's where you get a hundred dollar penalty. Then you've had a right to appeal that to a disinterested hearing officer. That decision has gone against you. Then you've had a right to appeal it to you guys. That decision has gone, gone against them. Then they go to a judge at Butte County. That's just a civil judge. It's not a criminal matter. There's a lot of due process and there's a lot of checks in the system, kinda to Bill's point. If we've got an employee, I don't think we have one, but if we do have one that's just having a bad day and doesn't like a person and issues them a citation. There's checks in the system many times before that, that goes to Superior Court.
I don't anticipate or I'm not insinuating that we would have any employees like that. I just, I just want us to be sure that we got our i's dotted and our k's crossed. And I'm sure that we will. But when you start issuing fines and all of this, I understand due process quite well, cause I do expert witnessing for attorneys. And that's the biggest thing we got going for us in this country is due process. Now you'll agree with that, won't you?
Well, it's in the constitution.
One of the big things. The big thing is due process. Okay. Well, anyway.
All right.
I think, go ahead.
Did you wanna sum, you, you wanted to sum it up before I go to the public?
I have one more comment, Ken.
Go to the public.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm not aware that the district has ever levied fines like this before in its history. I'm not aware of the droughts I've lived through up here. I tanked water and used bricks and all that stuff. And. stuff, and back in the '70s. The thing is, I don't think it's necessary for us to go to a fine system now. Because of the history of the district, we've been able to meet the measures of conservation that was needed for it. We never had a mandate from the state before, but the mandate is for the whole district. It's not for individuals. We're putting a mandate on, is basically, we're saying as a district, we want to mandate the use of the water, and we're going to fine you if you don't do it. And I don't think that's something we want to do as a district.
Okay, thank you.
All right, one last comment before you go to the public.
Yes?
A reminder, this is for the worst of the worst. And the reason you would want to adopt it is because this is fair to all of those people in our district that are working their butt off to conserve water, that are putting buckets in their shower and hauling them out to their plants and doing all the efforts they can to contribute to the community. You, as a board, should have a process where the district can go to that guy that wants to thumb the nose at the district and hose down his driveway every day and have his sprinklers run down the street when you've got all of your other customers out there do bucketing water and all of the things we hear that people are doing. Some of them are losing their plants, they're losing their lawn, they're being impacted by this. And it's a fairness to them to get this process in place so that we are helping to prove that we're not going to accept people thumbing the nose at the program.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. I want to let you know a bit of the rules. We're only going to be talking about this subject. So we're not going to be talking about the price that we charge for water or, you know, grumpy customer service people. We will talk about this particular topic. You're going to be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public may direct questions to the board in general. The board can choose to answer those questions, or the board can choose to maybe go to expert advice, our counsel or staff, to get an answer, or the board may just think about it and tuck it away and not address it. But you won't address your questions directly to staff. Address it to the board members. Once a member of the public has relinquished their time to speak, so if you're up there and the clock is ticking and you're done after three minutes, then you don't get another bite at the apple on this particular topic. You know, there may be something else later in the agenda you'll have an opportunity for. Well, that's not quite exactly right. When we finish the first public speaking or the public comment section, we're going to come back to the board for some additional questions, clarification, input and things. Then I'm going to go back to the public for one last time, because you might have heard something in this discussion that reminded you of some issue, and we're going to give you an opportunity to bring that back up again. What we don't want to see is just hammering home and complaining about the same exact thing. For example, the easiest thing is rates. Well, I don't like rate increases. Okay, so you told us. But if you continue talking and all you're saying is you don't like rate increases, and maybe it's time to let another public member talk about some other aspect of this. So try to keep it linear and moving forward. And there is no such thing as a public member giving their five minutes to somebody else so they can continue talking once they've expired their five minutes, okay? All of these rules are written on the back of the agenda. The procedure's there, so if you want to take a look at them, you can. At this particular point, I'll open this up to the public and ask if anybody would like to be our... Ward, you can be our first speaker.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your description of how we're handling this, and I appreciate the opportunity for a follow-up afterwards. This is an important topic. As you know, I am on the Water Conservation Committee. I'm also a member of the Paradise Garden Club. And on that behalf, there are 109 members in the Paradise Garden Club, most of which are familiar with what we had talked about after the previous Water Conservation Committee and how we had got to that process and why it's important to have this element as part of our Water Conservation Plan for PID and all of the members in the Town of Paradise. We, as an entire population of the club, not a single person has objected to any of the language in this. Those are the ones that have read it or have asked me for an explanation of it and would wholeheartedly support the adopting of this ordinance. That's pretty bold and blanket statement. We believe that it is very responsible for PID to have this kind of a policy and statement. We also believe that we should have some kind of enforcement procedures. However, it is most likely it will never, ever be used, because the emphasis and the history here has been on education. Frankly, that's what PID has done. That's what the garden club has done. That's what the master gardeners have done. That's what the California Native Plant Society has done for well over a year. And you know that we started it last year with the Waterwise Gardening Expo, of which you participated in. We believe that the Town of Paradise and every meter holder here, whether they got a 50% letter or a 20% letter, can in fact make that reduction. We asked several people in the garden club if they wouldn't mind revealing what their aquahawk account said about where they were. Several of them said, "Well, I was here, and now I'm here. So yes, I can see where I can make a difference." I'm one of the leaders. They asked me, "What are you doing?" "I'm at 4,600 cubic feet for a month. I have over an acre." And they said, "How'd you do that?" You know what? If you follow, like George explained, the simple things that are in the outline of what you do with your exterior watering, it is not that hard to get your water use down. Three people who are on the garden tour, of the six, got 50% letters. Within the first couple of days, all three of them contacted PID. All three of them got a positive response about what they could be doing or were doing to get it down. By Friday afternoon, one of them got a reply from PID that, "As of this afternoon, we see that you are now at 46% savings. That's good enough, Mr. Williams," they told him. Nothing to worry about. No, you won't get fined. Frankly, I think we're at the point where we have to understand you're going to operate on some common sense here. I don't think George said it that way, but I think that's what it comes down to. Nobody that holds a meter in this town is going to have a problem meeting the substantial savings we're asking of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. Next speaker is in line and ready to go.
Seth, through too many of these meetings, not to know to be prompt. My name's Martin Nichols, resident here in Paradise. And I think it's been answered by Mr. Barber that the sanctions that might be imposed by this ordinance only apply to people that don't follow the outdoor water regulation rules. Your ordinance, which adopts Resolution 2015-04, I don't think makes that that clear. And I would recommend that some sort of an amendment to your ordinance be included somewhere that clarifies that point, that the sanctions only apply to people that don't follow the outdoor watering rules. Because in Section 7 of your resolution, it lays out some pretty bold language that the general manager is directed to write a letter each owner of the property constitutes a high-resident user advising them immediately to reduce their water by 50%. It doesn't say you have to, but it's pretty strong language, and I think a lot of people get confused. And I think it would be better legislation if the application of the penalties to only those people that didn't follow the rules was included. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, sir. The next... Oh, you've deferred? Okay. The... Oh.
Hello, Renee Boyes-Murdo. And if you could go back a couple of pages to administrative citations, please? I'm questioning the use of the term "administrative." This is a civil citation, if I am correct? Yes?
Correct.
Okay. And ultimately, it would progress to where someone was sent to... The case would be sent to the district attorney for charges to be filed? So it would turn into a criminal case?
If the district attorney accepted it.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. President, do you want me to respond to that?
Well, I think that these are some things that we can't respond to up here. So I would like for you to.
Okay, so 377 of the Water Code, this, the resolution you adopted in May, and then the ordinance proposed for tonight. The authority comes from 375 series of the Water Code. 377 of the Water Code currently is the only kind of enforcement power you have, and that's the referral to the district attorney's office. So what you're referring to is...
Excuse me. So if we did nothing, we always have that?
Yes, and that's still included in your resolution that you already adopted.
Thank you.
So what she's referring to is the fifth and succeeding administrative citations. Rather than immediately step one, potentially going to the DA's office, we're kind of saying, "No, we're going to adopt this progressive approach. We're still reserving the right to go to the DA's office, but we're going to do so after you've really missed many opportunities to correct the offending action."
So my question is, on the citation, the offenses that someone would be cited for are out of like the 375 codes that you're speaking of? Am I correct? So those are actually laws and criminal, a possible criminal offense?
The 375 series does not spell out the wise water use practices. It just gives an irrigation district or any other government agency the authority to adopt a water conservation program or an ordinance with penalties. So the water conservation program, which the board has already adopted, is the mechanism that gives the specifics of what the specific offending practices may be.
I think my question is, would they be cited for a civil offense or a criminal offense?
At step five?
No, initially.
How many steps?
Step one through four is civil.
Right.
If we haven't gotten your attention after step four, which I severely doubt will ever happen, then we say we're no longer doing the administrative process. We're going straight to 377, which says we can refer the matter to the district attorney's office.
And then it would become criminal?
If they chose to pursue it.
Exactly, if they accept it.
The district attorney's office is very busy with substantial crimes, so...
Real crimes?
Well, one of my questions also is that if it does proceed to step five and the district attorney's office declines to proceed with prosecution, what would the board then, or PID then decide to do on that?
That's where it says... Sorry.
No, no, let's go ahead, George.
That's where you get into reserving our remedies, including reducing deliveries to the property. That's the power we have.
So we may put flow restrictors on.
Hmm, okay. I just have concerns about the district attorney's office even reviewing things of this nature because of their caseload, they're overworked as it is, the courts are overburdened as it is, and people who have committed felonies are being released from prisons probably as we speak.
So the DA wouldn't take it, then?
So then it would come back.
So then it wouldn't be criminal?
Renee, like Dustin said, it'll probably never get to this point. We are probably never going to have someone get to probably step three, hopefully, or four, or five.
The bottom line is, these are all the options we have on the table here. We don't have any others.
Yeah, this is, you know, our step process. Hopefully, people are going to get the message, the point. You have to start, you know, not watering your driveway and conserve more water. But we always do have the flow restrictors, I guess, as our last and final step. Do it be implemented.
Can't we even turn their water off if it reaches the water?
It's possible. You have, there's some implications.
Gross. But a flow restrictor would be within our power.
Yeah.
What would be the legal process that we would go onto someone's property and install a flow restrictor?
The meters are...
To the meters on our property.
The meters are the property of the district, and they're generally in areas we have the right to be.
Okay.
We shut them off all the time for non-payment, so this is a monthly occurrence that we take this type of action.
Shutting them off for non-payment, I think, is a little different than going in and installing additional equipment without notifying... Is there going to be a notification process to the homeowner?
Oh, most definitely.
They're at step five. They've been notified.
All those notifications?
Pretty much been notified multiple times.
Maybe, maybe.
Okay. Because I didn't have the five-minute timer, we've now gone through...
They used up a lot of my time. It's there at all.
Okay, but thank you, Bill. Appreciate your input and your questions. Do we have another public member that would like to speak? Uh, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I just, on the... Does that work? I don't know. I guess so. All right. On the matter of adopting policies to punish homeowners, I believe it would be a good idea to make sure that the current structure of the water, the way that you assess water usage is sufficient, because from what I'm seeing in my example personally, and I don't know, there's, I've talked to a few other people around the town that said this. For example, if I had two houses on one property, they're separately metered, separate addresses, separate everything, except for water, I don't know why I bought it, it was like that, they're on the same meter, they're getting treated as one. And I know there's other houses like that, and there's probably other situations where people are being asked to conserve. In my example, like I said, it was about $45 a month for two houses, which I don't know exactly how the units break down, how that... But it seems to me that my tenants are going to have to, they're going to have to be using the same amount as one house would normally use to meet that 50% reduction, which means that, and I know one of the tenants doesn't water at all, outdoors at all. So that would mean, in a normal situation, they would have to reduce, one tenant would have to reduce a lot of usage to meet, to meet a single... So I'm saying there's probably other loopholes in individual circumstances. If you adopt this resolution to punish people, and I know it's going to be, it's step by step, so it's not going to be, you know, suddenly, wow, out of the, bam, they're just... But I don't really see anything that I can do in my case to reduce that, except install another meter, which is going to cost me $5,000, or, you know, go out there and with a telescope and watch my tenants every minute and, you know, "Oh, God, you're..." You know, I can't, you know, that's not realistic. So, and I know that some of these procedures were put into effect before the mandatory regulations by the governor came into effect. But a review of those might be good to make sure that... Because I've talked to other people that have multiple residences, and they're going, "Wow, I don't know how I'm going to do this." That's pretty much it on my end. Is that...
Did you get a letter?
Yeah, I got a letter, and I called them up. I said, they said, "Yeah, that's for..." I go, "I got a multiple residence place, and it's being treated as a single address." It's not even, they're not even addressing the fact that there are two separate addresses, two separate meters and everything else except the water. And they said, "Oh, well, let's put you through to this person." And this person, "I don't know what's going on." And they went back, and they looked, and they saw that, "Oh, yeah, about a year and a half ago, we redid our billing statements, and now houses such as yours that have two units or less are treated as a single-family unit." Although they were treated as multiple previous to that for their, you know, 10 or 20 years or whatever. And that, I believe, was just, I don't know, it saves me like $8 a month or something, but it takes, it eliminates the fact that there are two separate families living in two separate houses being treated as one single house.
You said they use less than two units?
No, two unit, two dwelling units or less.
Yeah, but I, oh, okay, but two units.
Well, there's... Yeah. You want to address the two unit?
We got several calls from people with two dwelling units. Prior to that, the board got, or the district got lots of complaints about people with duplexes and mother-in-law homes, and why were they paying so much a month?
Yeah, right.
And the board changed that process, so all of these mother-in-law homes are treated as... homes are treated as one. But every, I've had the question from staff, they ask me directly, they get the same answer as everybody else, follow the outdoor watering restrictions, and you've got nothing to worry about.
Okay, yeah, I mean...
We understand there's gonna be situations where if the majority is indoor, then, and it puts you to that level, then it's all gonna come out in the wash, in the end of the day, so...
Are you currently signed up for?
There's no threat or worry at all about getting involved in this process unless you're washing down the sidewalk, or your sprinklers are going out in the street, or you're not following...
Yeah, and I know that's not happening for a fact, so, but...
Then you've got nothing to worry about.
But the reason I, I am worried is because, you know, they told me when they were gonna switch it to a single one, I was a little concerned about that. They said, you got nothing to worry about, and then the governor comes in, you know, and so it's, I know the tighter that this thing gets, the more people are gonna, you know, it's gonna get more dicey, rates are gonna go up, things are gonna go, and so what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that, as a, as a water district, that we haven't looked at, you know, how are these resolutions gonna break down in implementing them, and are people gonna get, you know, certain people are gonna get treated fairly, or unfair, you know, that's where people are gonna start saying, well, it's not my, you know, everybody wants to be an equal platform, and so that's, that's the part that would be good to make sure that when it does get implemented, you know, because honestly, I don't see anything that, go ahead, five minutes, okay?
Yeah. And you aren't gonna, you won't know about equality of implementation until it's experienced.
No.
We're saying that there is going to be that. It's very straightforward and direct, there's formulas for it, there's processes, there's steps, and I think it's, it will prove to the less owners of the task once, once you see it implemented for several months. Do we have another person from the public that would like to speak? We have a, oh, the bashful one.
Bashful, yeah. I just wanted to say that as, as is written, written here, water, wind, I'm pretty much failing every one of them. No water in between 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
You know, let, let me see if I can make sure that you understand. You're using drip irrigation system?
I'm using drip irrigation systems on, on plants, right.
Okay.
But then I have to go back to some of them that doesn't do a good job of, see, they're in shallow pots.
Okay, so what do you mean, you go back to them?
With a hose.
Are you hand watering?
Okay, hand watering is okay also.
With a shut-off valve?
I believe.
I got, yeah, I got your shut-off valves, you know?
That's legal.
Yeah, you're exempt from that.
Even though you're doing it, exempt from that. As the day goes by, that I don't have a hose on my hand.
Okay, but that's okay.
You have to go beyond the, that is for simplicity, for people that don't wanna read the rules, but if you look at it, it says, exceptions apply, so when you go to the full, the full program, watering by hand is not on odd even, nor is it on the hours, drip irrigation's not on odd even, and it's not on the hour restriction.
So...
You're essentially exempt from that, of what you just read.
Do you know, on your emitters, how many gallons per, per hour, do you know what they are, what?
No.
You oughta, you oughta check on them. If they're two gallons per hour or less, you have no restrictions, and you can cover up five acres in them and irrigate anytime you wanted to, because we've asked that question before, George is shaking his head. At any time of the night or day, now, you would be better off not to do it at the heat of the day, you know, for saving water and also on your plants. But if you have that kind of a system and you're hand watering, you're fine.
What I have is, they're called...
Silver.
Spot spitters. They're can spitters, they call them spot spitters, I think.
Yeah, but how many gallons per hour?
They shoot the spray out.
How many gallons?
They don't, they don't rate them that way.
Well...
They shoot adjustable spray.
Right, and you can adjust them?
They can adjust them down to about like that. And I have two in each pot, or sometimes one in each pot.
Well, I, I would suggest you work with our customer service department, have them take a look at it and give you...
Well, that's why I called, and I never got...
Well, like George said, we...
I'd like to talk to somebody.
We got hundreds of calls.
I'd love to talk to somebody.
We'll get someone out there.
Okay.
All right, yes, sir, you've been patient back there.
My name's Barry Bunty, and I'd like to speak in the support of the enforcement rule. I think staff has made the case here that they need another arrow in their quiver when they go to the state, and I think that the enforcement rule would give them that arrow. And the state, either that or the state's gonna dictate to you. So, you better have something, and when you have to make a report on the 15th of July, the state's gonna say, what have you done to make your 36% PID? And here's one of the things we've done, we've created this enforcement rule, and the state's gonna say, that's pretty good, that's pretty good. If you didn't have that, they'd tell you what to do. They may do it anyway, but at least you got that arrow to work with. And I think all of the people here should be very pleased with this board and this staff who do an excellent job of stewardship of our water, and I think you guys should all be commended for that, and I don't belong to the garden club.
He's gonna, he's gonna be recruiting you, I think.
He's gonna be recruiting you.
Do we have another member of the public, Gordon, that would like to speak?
Well, actually, all I'd like to say is, I'd like to see if the PID would work with the Town of Paradise to start recycling water into the home. I know this year's kind of short, short timeframe for it, but years down the road, like your shower and laundry water, stuff like that, that's pretty much all.
Gray water usage? Gray water usage?
Yes, gray water usage, yes. Kinda get the public notification of it and everything, everything like that.
And you happen to have some expertise on how to plumb that?
Yes, I do.
You see a plumber?
He is. Thank you, Gordon. Any other public comments at this particular time? And as I said, then, we will come back to you again. I'm going to bring it back to the board. George, is this the time that I would close the public participation, and then we begin to discuss the ordinance? And then allow public back in?
Yeah, close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then they're actually commenting on the action.
On the action that we're gonna take.
It's supposed to be out, it's supposed to take a five-minute break.
Excuse me?
Would it be, proper to take a five-minute break?
I will, right after I close this and move on to the second half of it. So, at this point, I will close the public hearing, and the, the very next item on the, on our agenda is for the board to consider the adoption of this ordinance, and so we will pick up where we've left off here. We'll discuss it again, as you see, we have differing opinions, and people wanna do things different ways, and at that particular time, I'll come back to the public and ask if the public would like to have an opportunity to speak to us again about this topic. So, for right now, I'm going to adjourn, and we'll take a five-minute break for water and restrooms and stretching of legs, and we'll reconvene at 8:15. Thank you.
Thank you. That was like a really good call, that was a really good piece of, a really good call.
I wasn't worried at all.
Okay, we will reconvene our regular meeting and move on to the next agenda item.
Why is the door open? Somebody opened it.
Reconvening at 8:19 PM, please.
Thank you for the break.
And the item we're going to is item 6A2, which is to consider the adoption of ordinance number 2015-01. Is that right, 01? Okay.
That's what we've been talking about, isn't it?
That's what we, that was the public hearing section. So, now we're, we're at the point where we're, we're either gonna be entertaining a motion, well, I'm gonna just have you segue us from public to our job here, and then turn it back to us.
Yeah, right now, we're open to any input and adjustments to what's presented. I've got the word document up, so we can make changes on the fly. Anything the board wants to suggest to word differently, or errors they found when they reviewed it.
I have a question. Recently, on the news, I heard that they passed something where you don't have to pay for your ticket before, before you are heard, and I'm, and I'm hearing that we're saying here that you have to pay for it before you're heard.
Well, this isn't a ticket, so I don't, I'm not familiar with...
Oh, okay, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure that it, that one didn't affect...
That was auto, that was auto-related, wasn't it?
And I don't think it was, I don't think it was statewide, I think it was in certain jurisdictions.
Just New York County.
San Francisco, I think.
I don't know.
But at any rate, we can make adjustments as the board directs.
Okay.
I should report so that, because I was waiting for my general manager's report and keep chewing it all up, but PID in May reduced our usage by 45% compared to 2013 May, so...
Yeah.
We're, we're on the right track.
And I wanna make sure this gentleman had clarification that we're not doing this on an individual basis, we're doing this as district-wide, so you're probably not gonna get singled out, even if you're using a little more water than the average single-family home.
Unless you're breaking the watering rules.
Unless you're breaking the watering rules, exactly, where, you know, people are out there with the water wiggles, you know, in the middle of the day and just blatantly wasting water. I don't think it's ever gonna come into play. Are you signed up for Aqua Hawk?
Uh, I haven't yet.
That'd be a great way to look, because you're looking at 2013's water, that's where you gotta save your 50% from, is your 2013 usage, not last year's usage.
No.
No, no.
It's, it's...
June through February.
June through February.
That's the, the state mandated period of time.
But that's an easy way to look at, the district can generate the same information, but that's an easy way for you to look at, okay, what was I using in June 2013? I need to be about 50% below that, and then you look at it, you go, oh, gosh, I'm, I'm below that. You might have had a leak, you might have had, I don't know if it's the same tenant? Same tenant?
Well, it's, it's, and so we can move on, it's, it's similar in structure, what you're talking about, to a person who may have built a eight-bedroom mansion, populated it with 12 children, 36 grandchildren, and one water meter. It's just one unit, doesn't matter if it's two units, it doesn't matter, he's got 38 people living in the home. That's a huge amount of water usage.
Are you talking about me, President Hutt? Because all my grandkids are starting to move back.
Uh, you know, because there's all kinds of ways that life comes in to say, it's not fair, you know, we, we should be like 38 other houses that only have one person. Well, we aren't getting that way. We're taking the high road, we're taking the, the common sense approach to this, and we're not looking to go out and find people, and you're gonna find that that's the way it's going to be successful, because we're gonna have good relations with our public and we'll have cooperation. Okay, I, before I'll ask for a motion, I will say that on, there's a correction I'd like you to make on iPad page 50. It's paragraph seven.
You're gonna have to direct us otherwise, because we're on the word document, we're not on the iPad.
Okay, then go to seven, hearing procedures, go down to paragraph E, you failed to change the word enforcement to compliance. Right there, don't you, you don't...
You said seven.
I thought you said seven.
Well, I just found another one, go back up. Oh, oh, no, it's crossed out, okay, yeah, go, go to seven. And this was the only one I found, it just jumped out at me when I was reading it, as they do. Seven E, like in Edward, down there at the end of that first line. That was the only worthwhile correction to, just typo-type stuff.
I have a couple of comments. Again.
Okay.
Talking to the gentleman on the end, you feel that a district with an ordinance of this type in place would be better off with the state mandates that if they do, in a month or two, right? Is that what I got from your presentation?
You're talking to me?
I thought it was you.
Mr. Bunty? That was Mr. Bunty in the back.
Okay, with you, I'm sorry, I thought it was a little bit on the end. Well, the other thing, you know, I've been talking one way or another, and I got a lot of clarification. I got, I got some clarification. I've been chewing on this thing since June, before June 4th, because we brought it up at our water conservation meeting, and getting different things, and as I mentioned, I do expert witnessing, it's all civil cases, and I understand due process, but I learn more all the time. One of the things that I understand is administrative citation, and one of the nice things that's happened out of our committee, one of the things that we asked to change was the compliance officer, we voted on it, and that's been changed throughout here, you just brought one more up on this particular point, and then I had another couple of talking here, and so even though I was thinking that we might wanna put this off, I've kinda changed my mind on that because of the fact that maybe we need to move on with it and get some stuff going, but I think there's a lot of groundwork that still has to be done, George, as far as training and all kinds of things, you know, because it only takes one bad apple in a barrel to really upset things. And one of the things, I got an email from an individual that watches things all the time, and it said here, I think there is some confusion by customers over the conservation target. Folks I talk to commonly think we need to save an additional 36% over last year, is there some way we can show people where they are compared to 2013? So, he's got that, because it's very difficult, it's very difficult to work out.
Well, no, actually, the bills going forward for the rest of the year...
We'll show that.
Won't go to last year, it'll go to 2013.
Go to 2013, that's great, and I've always been a big water user at PID. The only one that's having problems with that, that I'm not doing it any longer, is Kevin. At this particular point, I've been using water pretty heavily in a positive manner since 1951, and today, guess what I did? I snuck in here just at 9:00, and I signed up for Aqua Hawk, right here. And the reason is because I'm a dinosaur on computers, and the reason I'm that way is because I have a bunch of technicians and all kinds of things that, they say, don't do your thing, Doug, and we'll take care of that, and so I'm just a dinosaur on that particular one. I saved 80%. I knew I was at about 70, but Aqua Hawk this morning, I've saved 80% on this type of a thing, you know? But I do have all those damnable grandkids moving back, but they got two buckets in each shower, I might add.
And well, can you get them to take the shower together, you know, then...
Oh, we don't want that. No, that's not a good deal. If, well, they bring a boyfriend in or something like that, then grandma looks the other direction.
All right, we're moving on with water. Do we have a motion?
Legal's got a comment?
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. One is on G, double the I there. I suggest striking the added language, the colored language there. The reason is, if, as Larry commented on early, we are requiring payment along with the request for hearing. We're not gonna allow a request for hearing and then payment to be made thereafter. So, if you have paid your payment late, you've lost your opportunity to request a hearing. So, because of that, in the event of a refund, there's not gonna be any late charges. Follow me?
So, why, so why put it in there?
So, we don't even have to lay it out?
Go strike that language, because it'll never apply.
Right there, yeah.
The...
George said he drafted this while you were gone or not available to read it. Have you had a chance to read it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, have you?
I have one other, go up, George, at five. Go up, George, to five.
I went too far. I'll have him run.
Okay, so go down a little bit, Kevin. The end of five, I think.
Five D.
Yeah, there's a blank there. I don't recall getting into this in really in any detail at the Conservation Committee, but that's a blank for what the penalty will be. And there's really no legal requirement. It could be a percent, it could be a set amount, but it's something that the Board ought to decide and put in there before considered adoption.
This relates to a late payment charge, though.
Yes, it needs to be defined by the Board.
What is the late payment fee on the bill now?
Currently, yes.
What's that?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
But I would not recommend mimicking that, because this is, this is light years away from a water rate. This is a penalty, it ought to have a penalty rate.
A late or a return check fee is $25.
I was gonna say, yeah, double that, at least 50.
Fifteen-day notice is $10.
Yeah, so that's 35, this is 50, 25.
Those are what we currently charge people.
$85.
That's pretty steep.
Well, isn't that the, isn't that the return check fee, a shut-off, 50? And what was the other thing? Was it $10?
Fifteen-day notice.
Fifteen-day notice.
Yeah, but versus this, you're only tacking on $100. I mean, you're charging a late penalty on a $100 charge with the first step. Eighty-five.
I would say 10%.
Pretty steep.
Why did you say 10%?
10% of the penalty amount.
Right. Yeah, it'd be 10%.
Or $20 if it's step two or...
The 200, yeah. So put 10.
I like the 10%. Easy for people to calculate.
Exactly.
Maybe we'll encourage them to get it over with, pay the fine and move on.
So that's a charge.
Maybe.
A late payment charge of 10%.
I think 25 is way too expensive not to get to that level, but it's hard to figure. It's a $100 bill.
Quantity or something.
Citation.
Quantity.
Other quick question. What do we, if this is approved this evening, when would this go into effect?
Legally, it takes effect immediately. There's also, legally, it takes effect immediately. That's in the Water Code. There, it would also be published in the newspaper, probably in summary form.
It'll start ringing about five minutes after that.
Well, we'll put this on in the legal notices for sure.
So that's, is that your last change?
Any other suggestions or changes by Board members or comments to make before I go to the public?
I wanted to get clarification. In our last month's meeting, I believe it was, the state did lay out that they will be fining us. This was kind of response to Director Kellogg was saying, well, he doesn't want to be fining anybody out there, but the state's made it pretty clear that they will fine us up to $10,000 per day if we're out of compliance.
So let me remind you of the state's timeline. The 36% mandate started June 1st. The first kind of assessment of where the district's at will be July 15th.
Yes.
Hopefully, we're at 36% or greater, but if we're not, then we believe the State Water Board's compliance process will kick in. And what they've said will happen is kind of a first step will be an information order. What are you doing, District, to accomplish our mandate? The next step up would be a, I think they're calling it a conservation order or something like that. That's where the state kind of says, do X, Y, and Z. And that's where I believe there's a fair chance that the state is gonna say, you shall implement ordinance, you shall have these penalties.
This language.
Yes. The third step, if you still haven't accomplished the objective, the conservation objective, is the cease and desist order, and that's where you have the potential for $10,000 per day fines. And that would be assessed on the district, not on any individual.
Exactly.
District customer.
So those very reasons right there that Dustin just mentioned, that is why I believe this ordinance is definitely needed tonight.
And I'll add, straight from the Chairwoman of the Board in the last conference, they are expecting exceedances of the requirement in the summer months, because they know that you're gonna have to exceed your requirement in the summer months in order to make up for the winter months where you don't have as much opportunity to conserve on metrically. So it may be related to what they see on the list, you know. If we're at 40%, and we're at the top of producers statewide, we probably won't get a lot of their attention. But if we're at, if we're at 38% and everyone else is showing up pretty good, we may be getting an information order just because they want bigger numbers in June, July, and August.
And currently, you said from May till...
The month of May, we were 45%, we were 45% reduction.
Doug?
Channel 12, a week or two ago, had on coverage of the city of Orland. Do you represent the city of Orland?
No.
I don't know quite who our Water District it is, but they had it on three times. And they have a finding system, because he said they hadn't issued any fine. But the thing that I zeroed in on, and I didn't have time to write it down, they have what they call a conservation monitor. They actually showed the individual riding around in his pickup, you know, giving pointers and that for the city of Orland and this type of thing. And they're saving 31%, that's what they were doing. And they haven't issued any fines, and he's seen fines. Of course, that's where I picked up on it. It was on three times, two different days on Channel 12.
I didn't see it, but remember the difference in public agency. A city has police powers.
Yeah.
You know, they can have a police force.
Right.
A special district such as Paradise Irrigation District does not have police powers. You have powers that are essentially delegated to you by the legislature, set forth in the Irrigation District Act. And in this particular instance, we're relying on the 375 series of the Water Code. So it's different powers.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah.
Seth, what I was talking about is that the state is not mandating what we're doing here. In other words, it's not, we're not doing this under a state mandate. The state mandated, we've already covered that. This is not mandated by the state. And that's why I say that I think we're just literally being too...
Here's the scenario. What if the state jumps the gun ahead of our next meeting and decides they're going to mandate something and puts rules that we don't particularly like in front of it?
Well, we're on July 15th. When's our next meeting? That's when we'll get the report from the state.
Second, whatever it is, somewhere in there.
We'll know where we stand long before the state gives the report.
I would much, I would much rather have a, I would much rather have a document in place.
That's when our report is due to the state.
June 2nd?
No. Our report is due to the state on July 15th. They may not be ready to respond until August 1st.
Right, and that's why I'm saying that we could put this ordinance off, and with that comes, we have neighboring districts, according to Dustin, that have not put in this thing, and there's no mandate for it. So the point I was trying to make is that we're gonna put a mandate in it, and we're gonna have, I know several men spoke for this, but we're gonna have people in the district, when they hear about this thing, gonna be quite worried.
They're gonna understand that they have to conserve water. Is that what you're alluding to? Because I think that's what it's gonna bang home, and that's what we're trying to get through, is that we're in a drought situation that requires drastic measures.
Well, in the history of the district, we've been in worse situations than we are now. We have 19 months of water in the reservoir. Our only problem is with the state, that we have plenty of water. Feather River has, or Sock Feather, I'm sorry, has plenty of water. So I'm looking at it and saying, we're not anywhere close to where we were in the 70s up here on the ridge, and they didn't put an ordinance through to fine people to save water.
Okay, but, and no, thank you, that's a good point to bring up.
No.
But there is a fine in place to fine us if we don't...
That's another good point to bring up. I'm gonna bring up a point, and I would like to get soon, get to the public. And that is that I think we should be progressive, Bill, not regressive. Just because it hasn't happened in the past doesn't mean that they didn't do it properly in the past. If we're doing something that is well-thought-out, common sense approach, it's protecting the masses of the common people who are out there striving to save water, because there's nothing that would really irritate me more, I guess, than if I were conserving and letting my front yard die and taking extra efforts, and my next-door neighbors say, well, shoot, what can they do? They didn't pass any fines, they can't assess anything. I'll wait and see if they pass any rules before I start to conserve. That's not the right way to do it. We take the steps now. We use it or not use it, but we're protecting the vast majority of our public. That's my comment on why we should go ahead and do it in counterpoint to yours. Any other comments before questions?
I just think that it's prudent to be ahead of the game.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for public comments. Same old set of rules. Let's see if we can get through this pretty quickly and make your, make your points.
I can make four points pretty quickly. You probably don't even have to set the timer. Now is the time to do this. July, August, and September, and part of October are our hottest months. That's when we have to save the most amount of water. Who cares when it's raining in November, January, and this thing expires in February? Which is another question. Does this part of the water conservation program expire in February next year? It's just a question. I don't know whether it does or not. We had an example in the past, I believe it was last year, where we did use a legal alternative to address the theft of water. You recall that? Using a fire hydrant, our water, and putting it in somebody's tanker truck? That's wrong. That's an extreme situation. And frankly, I think that's what we're talking about here, an extreme situation. But we've done it in the past. We've used an extreme situation to go after somebody legally. I think we need this kind of teeth to have it there again. And to the issue of gray water, you'll recall that we had quite a discussion about this last year before the Town of Paradise did adopt an ordinance that allowed for that. I was one of the spokespersons that promoted that and did address the town with the fact that PID did not support or deny the applications of using gray water. That was your position. I thought that was fine. Not was mine, but that was yours. And I reported it that way. However, the town ignored the suggestion that the permit fee be $9 and made it $92. Since they passed that ordinance, nobody has spent $92 and applied for a permit to put in gray water. But I know at least three contractors have put in no less than 20 gray water systems in this town to irrigate properly without going through the town, simply because the homeowner said, "I'm not paying 92 bucks for a permit for something that should cost less than $9." Thank you for your time. Way less than $5.
Thank you. Yes, you may have a turn at this.
Thank you. Renee Boyzmerdo, if you could go to administrative citation, please. Actually, the part where it talks about what will be on the citation, that's... Back the other way.
Well, that's further down.
Further down, yeah.
Maybe up.
It's the other way, yeah.
There we go. Go to the next page. That's the last part of it.
Right there, right there. Item four, it says the amount, that what will be on the citation, it says, "shall be on the citation," the amount of fine for the violation. Is it possible to add that on the second citation, the amount of the fine will be included or something of that nature? Because this, to me, indicates that any citation issued is gonna have the amount of fine on there, and your first citation is strictly a warning. There is no fine.
Well, it'd be zero.
Yeah, we have a draft form in the agenda packet. It has a checkbox.
Okay. The other point that I would like to make, I, as a member of the public up here, I believe in being proactive, not reactive. But what's the guarantee that if we're proactive and we pass this, that the state won't come in and mandate that we change our policies to accommodate theirs?
State can do whatever it wants.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, Martin Nichols. One, I think it'd be very prudent to adopt this ordinance in some form. You want to do everything you can to keep the state from mandating, and we can come and talk to you. We can't go talk to them. It's easier for you to change your minds than it is for us to convince them. So it's very prudent. It's good representation of your consistency to be proactive and do all you can to avoid the state imposing rules that would be harsher or less customer-friendly than going here. Second, if you're not gonna adopt an amendment to the ordinance to clarify that fines and penalties only apply to people who don't follow the rules and not to people who don't meet the 50%, you should direct that at least Mr. Barber's comments that affect be included in the minutes.
Thank you.
Can Dustin do a clarification? Because we addressed that when we adopted the program, why we put mandatory...
Okay, well, good.
Well, the state's mandating it, is part of it, so is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, and kind of in preparation of our defense.
Right. So help me with, you, go ahead.
So we talked, when the, when the program was adopted, we talked about having voluntary 50%, 25%, 20%. And legal counsel was concerned that voluntary would be a red flag to the state. So our official policy statement is it's mandatory at those levels. That's what the state wants to hear. We are, and what we will tell them is we are confident that our customers in these groups, if they follow our program, will meet the target based on our research. So that's why it says mandatory in the, in the program itself rather than voluntary or a target.
Sounds more like a defensive technique to keep the state out of our business.
Yes.
May I debate him on this?
Yes.
If you look at your resolution 2015-04 and look at section seven on page seven of eight, does everybody have that available?
Yeah. It's not in here. Because the ordinance isn't in here, is it, Jordan? Or the program? I need to go to the desktop, so give me one second, I can bring it up. Pretty sure this is, this is close to the final anyhow. It should...
Page seven of eight, section 7A.
There?
You had it?
Yeah, there it is.
Back up, I think.
Up a more, higher?
It's on page seven of eight. I think, I think it's higher. I think you went past it.
You're referring to section seven?
I'm returning to section seven, sub-paragraph A.
Down, George.
Back down.
Okay.
That was the top of seven.
That's the language that ultimately became seven of eight.
Are we comparing the usage to 2014?
That was an error.
Okay.
I think that got cleaned up in the final.
Okay, I was, I know this was one of the earlier drafts, so I was like...
2013.
And I was saying, yeah. I don't remember us ever having a 2014 standard.
So that was, you got one of those letters, I didn't, because I've saved so much work.
That had pretty close to the right language of...
This one?
That's what it is, yeah.
Oh, in the public hearing notice? Okay. Oh, in the public hearing notice? Okay, so, let's see if we can find.
And you wanted to keep this short.
How am I gonna do that? It's not in there.
Sorry.
Your time's just about up.
What, what's your question?
You gonna gather everybody to sit down? Oh, I will.
I'm not finding it, my finger trips, so I'm, I believe that got fixed, yeah.
Okay, right, right there, I think, is pretty close to the final resolution.
Yes.
Do you have this on your screens, or you can see it?
I can see it, yeah.
See it?
The general manager is directed to write a letter each owner of the property, and it constitutes high residential user advising of the immediate need to reduce their usage by 50%. It doesn't say mandate, doesn't say required, it says advise. So, you know, it's somewhat, from a legislative viewpoint, having that in there is, is meaningless, because your ordinance, which adopts and attaches this resolution as a part of it, thereby, I think incorporating it in there, really only applies penalties if you don't do the outdoor watering rules, the odd days, the hours, and stuff like this.
That's true.
And, and so, I think, I think it's just kind of poor legislative structure, because it'd be, it's confusing to some people that it is. And that's why I'm suggesting that somewhere, either by amending this resolution, or by including it in the ordinance, or if not, including it in the minutes, you know, that the penalty section of your ordinance only applies to people that don't follow the outdoor watering rules. Even if they don't meet the 50 cents, Mr. Barber said that at least four times tonight.
Right, but we don't wanna put it in writing for the state to read.
Do you have any share of that?
Because it's mandatory.
I wouldn't recommend the change.
No.
Okay, would, would.
I think if, if you gentlemen, you want assurance that it's only gonna apply to outdoor watering, this is a public meeting, it's being recorded, you can request a copy of the recording.
It'll be in the minutes, yeah.
And, and will they, will Mr. Barber's comments be included in the minutes?
Yeah, I believe so.
Everything said will be.
There's a recording, there's a recording that you also have access to, because the minutes aren't, are not always verbatim, otherwise.
I understand.
Yes.
But it is in the recording.
All right, I understand, thank you. I recommend adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yeah, sand just ran out.
[laughing]
There was, there was a little clog, I was waiting to get. Any more public speakers? Public comments?
One more.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, I just wanna clarify that, for, for people who are getting this 50% that we were just talking about, this is, for, for, like we said, it's for the states, they have that language, but for our local community, we're, we're saying off the record that as long as you follow the outdoor watering advice, that you will not be penalized, even if you're going over 50, you're not meeting the 50% reduction that the state is requiring.
Yes.
Okay.
It's true.
Okay.
All right.
That's true.
You're safe.
And my explanation to the state is, through our analysis of our data, we are confident that if our customers meet our outdoor watering requirements, we will meet the state mandated 36% goal.
As, as an aggregate.
Which we did in May, already.
All right.
But, did, did you wanna, thank you.
If a person has these 25 grandkids, what we get, which I only got nine, if they all use more water, I would just go to a higher tier.
His fine's already in the mail.
Right?
Yeah, you could be.
There would be no fine or any of that, it would just, I would go to a higher tier and pay a little bit more fee.
And Doug, if you're not gonna use the water, we're gonna have to get it out of you somehow, so.
Yeah, you should just voluntarily go to the higher tier.
Don't, don't water your 36 kids outdoors.
Yeah.
Then be indoor.
Well, we got eight dogs to wash, too, I might add.
Oh, right.
But they're only washing them with a handheld power hose.
Yeah, we didn't cover dog washing along with our car washing ordinance.
I move approval to adopt ordinance 2015 dash one, adopting enforcement procedures and fines and penalties for water conservation.
I'll second.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. I didn't quite get to ask, just in case, there are any other public comments to be made? All right then, I'll take a motion. Oh, thank you very much, we have a motion, and a second. Any further comments, or commercials, or discussion or questions from the board?
Will we be able to look at the amended, the finished product before, I realize it's gonna be adopted like as of tomorrow?
Well, it's on your screen, so if you want us to kinda scroll through it, and you, the colored ink is where the changes were made.
I don't need those, but, the only thing that I saw in there that you followed was the compliance officer, or enforcement officer, so, that's what the committee recommended.
We added a 10% penalty, and we struck.
CFO.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we're going to have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. President, call?
Yes.
Director Flescher?
Yes.
Director Powell?
No.
President, say?
Yes. Motion carries four one, with Bill being the dissenting vote. Thank you very much for the public hearing, and the public participation, and the cooperation that we had from all of the public in regard to differing opinions, and moving this forward at a reasonable pace. I appreciate that. Next item on the, on the agenda is item six B, the toilet rebate.
Will I speak to that to start with? Because it came from the Conservation Committee.
Okay, for, the, the subject is facilities with public access, and we're gonna be considering approval to transfer $20,000 from one of our reserve funds to a toilet rebate program for PID customers with facilities that have public access, on a first come, first served basis, or however we may amend it. And Director Flesher, if you would like to make a, a statement now, you may, and.
Well, the statement I'm making is just on behalf of the Conservation Committee, which we're not doing until the last of the meeting. But anyway, it was put to us, and we had the two letters that you could see from the, I think you bring them up on here. The one is from the Adventist Health River Hospital, and you go show that on the wall. And then the other one was from the Paradise Ridge Senior Center. And the highlights of it, there's 111 toilets within the hospital, 58 locations that are currently high flush, and the Senior Center has, whatever it is here, and they can't afford to do it, they have seven toilets and three urinals, and I've used all of, I think, once or twice, there were meetings I've had there. And we talked about it, and we thought that, such as the spray nozzles and that, we should look at it, doing it, but we didn't give any suggestion on the amount of money, because we had no idea the amount, but we thought that it would be a very good thing if we could figure out, figure out how to support funding a rebate program for the facilities with public access. So, if they do not allow public into the toilet, they would not be able to get it. And then, as George mentioned here, he discussed it with Kevin Phillips, and that's where they came up with the $20,000. So we didn't have anything, we just thought it was a good idea to look at trying to help these people solve their high flush toilets.
Okay, very, very good item to bring up, thank you.
I have a question. Is this re, can this be retroactive? Because I replaced my, the toilet in my commercial building last month.
Do you allow public access to a toilet?
Yeah, yeah.
So, no, it won't be retroactive. George, is there anything else that you want to say for introduction on this item?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, and the committee, the committee did support the concept of, since we don't have a, an adopted rebate program of any shape or form, at this point, that we limit this to public access locations, because it, it gives us the best bang for our buck. You know, there are gonna be a lot more uses per day in a public access toilet than, than a residential home, and we don't have the funding to really start a residential toilet rebate program at this point anyhow. It's completely open for board input and, and change. The $100 rebate that, that I presented in here is more of an example than anything, it's, it's fairly common, some go a size 125, some, Southern California, you can probably get $200 rebates for toilets. I did have Jim Passanisi talk to the Ace Hardware, and if we wanted to purchase the toilets ahead of time ourselves, and somehow make that part of the program, I actually have it totaled up, but 9110, oh, we can get them for $230 versus a retail value of $437. So we can, we can make the dollar stretch more if we're willing to buy 100 toilets, or whatever the number is, and store them in our warehouse, and somehow make that part of the program, rather than a voucher system, or something like that, where these people would have, be paying retail on a voucher system.
I presume that's because Ace would be able to buy in a larger quantity and take advantage of a deeper discount with their supplier.
Yeah, specific for us, so.
And that keeps business on the ridge?
Right, that's the only, the depot, I bought mine for less than $100.
That's a residential, these are commercial, these are commercial toilets.
Really?
There, there's a difference between commercial.
So now you're really exempt at your commercial. I was really exempt, yeah, I guess, it's not, I thought it was a commercial toilet.
The flush valves are more, they're $120 versus the toilet bowl of $90. So, that's when you get into the commercial, where they know it's gonna be used a lot, and they have to build it for that, that's where your expense comes in.
Like a commercial toaster and an appliance toaster.
You might know something about that.
I might.
So if we, if we furnished the $230, whatever it was, toilet, well, then the facility that they were going to, would have to have the plumber put them in.
Right, well, they would anyhow.
Or a maintenance guy, yeah. So that would be.
It's too bad our plumber is gone, because we, we were discussing this earlier in the day, and, and I'm thinking that the installation fee for, you know, number one, if we buy the toilets, we're, we're not gonna be looking at, you know, some plumber markup on the hardware. It's gonna be an hourly job, and then they're gonna go out there and spend an hour of unbolted the old one, putting down a beeswax seal, and bolting in. Now, if there's other issues that require floor repair and things like that, that's not something that we're getting involved in. We're talking about the low flow hardware toilet, and you take care of your other issues if it doesn't fit properly, and it's a great deal for them.
Yeah, and the program would be, customer makes application, we'll send someone out to verify that it is a high flush toilet, and it qualifies. Then the person would have a set amount of days, 30 days or whatever, to install it, and then we'd make one more drive, drive by check to make sure that it was actually installed at the location they said, and then, then it'd be done. We would have a, a signature sign on the application form that recognizes that if they don't, they don't install it, or whatever, then we'll put a charge on their account equal to the cost.
They'll bill them $237.
Yeah, we'll bill it to them.
So, the hospital had put in a request for, or said that they have 111 toilets, I believe it was?
Right.
Is that what the number was?
They're looking for fif, 58.
58?
Yeah.
Okay, so would we give them the, they'd use up a large chunk, and say if we bought the toilets ahead of time?
Well, and that's for board discussion. You could limit it to, to five max, so that gets around more.
The hospital is a large facility, and that is one of our larger water users in town, so.
Although, did they, they didn't need the 50% letter, right, hospitals?
They were institutional.
Yeah, they weren't residential.
Institutional don't get those letters.
Yeah, but they are willing to make a large contribution to conservation, as far as what they're changing, some of their landscaping from grass to rock and.
There's a lot of ways they're cooperating with this.
They're taking it serious, and they're being a good partner.
And that's good on their budget, too, at the same time, so that's, it's beneficial to everybody.
You know, I, I thought about this.
And I should, I should be straight up, these are commercial toilets, they have a whole different set of rules, I didn't consult them. These might not even fit the health, the hospital level of requirement. It may not. It was, they instituted the, them and the other latter kinda brought the issue forward. This is not a program to help half of it go to them by any stretch. I don't even know if these toilets would work for them.
If they'll work.
Because we don't even wanna buy 100 toilets and have 35, you know, toilets be used, and we've got 65 sitting in a warehouse somewhere. We need to have our numbers all in a row as to how many requests. I'm sure you were, that's the way we were doing it, but, yeah, there might not be, we might say you've got $100 voucher.
Yeah, we'll, we'll most likely advertise the program and take applications before we decide to buy any toilets.
Well, no, I, I figured that, but that's what I mean, because you're gonna have different situations where, yeah, the Ace toilet might not be the one that we're looking at, might not be just the exact one that works for everybody's situation.
Well.
In which case we won't get a discount.
You know, if, if it, if it doesn't, and if we're stuck holding the toilet, so to say, and it's just in our way in storage, we can come back in and meet as a board and change our rules, and say, "Hey, we bought 100 toilets, we spent $23,000, $24,000, and we only got 48 of them placed, because it didn't meet the hospital's needs," or whatever. Okay, let's now offer to give these away to the first people of residential who call in.
Commercial toilets.
You know, we can move those out, if we so choose as a board, where, and it was not like we have to hold them in inventory for 10 years to get rid of them at this, at this pace.
This is why I was thinking a monetary voucher would be maybe a better way to go at it, rather than buying them.
The other thing is, we don't know that Ace is requiring us to buy 100 toilets.
Oh, I thought that's what they said.
I think they're giving us, they're giving us their price that they can get them for.
But they knew our budget, so they're expecting 87 in the range at least.
Yeah, but we not, might not have to buy them all, maybe we can buy 10 at a time, and just when they come in.
We might be able to buy 50, and they can get the same price, slight, it's possible.
Or maybe not buy any and give out the voucher.
The monetary voucher.
As the original idea was, but if, and if Ace is willing to do that, then that makes it easier on our part.
We can get, we can get the nuts and bolts of the administrative part of it, if that's where.
Where's the money coming from for this?
We have, we have room in the budget that we're gonna move.
How much is in the drought budget?
Conservation.
In, in the drought budget?
That's what you referred to in there, isn't it?
Drought funds, well, the drought fund is pretty much almost heating up, due to the fact that we're moving money from this year's deficit over there. So there's approximately probably, I would say probably $20,000 that we can probably move over there. But we're also gonna be moving money from office supplies, or from small tools, over to some.
To pay for the toilets. In other words, we don't have the money, otherwise, to just go out and do this.
No, we'd be, we'd be shifting budget numbers from other areas in the district.
That, that's my concern, is that we're, financially, we're taking it because of the drought, and then we're gonna spend $20,000, obviously we don't have, and it's gonna have to be pulled from other things, to be able to buy these toilets. And I'm going, does this make sense, in a way, under the considerations that the district is in financially right now?
Yeah, this is the same things that we did on voting for that hose thing that you recommended, that we buy the shut off, automatic timer thing. We spent money on those, we spent money on the, the self-acting closing water sprayer. We spend money on a lot of things, Bill, I don't, I'm not sure why you, you're focusing on this one. But this one will come with the cost savings. I mean, this is, it comes with the water savings, and of course, it, it's.
It's also published relations.
It's water that's going to be.
Community relations.
Yeah, but ultimately, you know, I, what's, what's the life of a toilet? 20, 30 years or 15 years?
I don't know, but we got one that's wore out in there right now.
We fixed it. We fixed it.
Is that what was causing the alarm to go off?
So, if my, if my four-year-old granddaughter had have gone in there, she'd have come out and said, "Boy, Papa, somebody dropped a load in there."
I'm glad you brought that up.
And I was being there before, let me finish, let me finish. All I had to do was winky think, but there was no way I was gonna go out of there without that thing flushing, because everybody looked at me and said, "Well, Fletcher didn't even flush the toilet." And five times, I had to get on that handle, because I was waiting for that power flush here. here, where, what happened to it? Well, it was so strong before it moved my hat on the counter here trying to get hit down.
That's because we put a flow restrictor on it.
I'll get Jim on it.
What?
I'll get Jim on it.
Five times, and finally the last one, George, I had to stand there and hold it.
Okay, what, at some point, I remember reading your estimate on how much water this would save on an annual basis.
It's at the bottom in that table.
Well, I used to be able to find it. Oh, it's because it's in the, it's in the little box there. Okay. So if a toilet, those, if they, if they have a life of twenty years, that's twenty million gallons?
What, what's a million gallon tank cost nowadays? Two million bucks?
Yep.
Twenty thousand's pretty cheap.
You know, I, I think that figure's a little dis, I remember the last time we had the low-flow toilets in this town, and it turned out people were flushing twice instead of once because they weren't getting enough water through.
Yeah, but technology has really come up. They got these things that just go.
Of course, it doesn't all come through the toilet, but thereabouts, Chico dumps, what, is it twenty-three million gallons a day into the Sacramento River out of their sewer plant? It's something like that. I think it's twenty, it's twenty-three million gallons a day, if I remember correctly, because you divide it by three hundred thousand, that's the acre-feet it's going in there, and they pull it out of Colusa. I always carry my water to Colusa.
You know, at, at some point I'll be able to put this into a full-blown presentation, but our demand was down to five thousand acre-feet last year, it's going to be around that or less this year versus two thousand and four where we were hitting eight to eight four hundred acre-foot of demand. So looking for the silver lining in this drought, the metering system, the aquahawk, getting people educated on what their outdoor water needs are, these are going to pay benefits for many years and they're going to be way cheaper than a bladder dam or a larger dam or other multiple options that not too long ago drilled a well that we were looking at for serious expenses at the district.
Thank you, George.
You've got Bill convinced, George. Okay, I'm, I'm kind of, I don't know if we have a, a motion on that, I don't think we do have.
If we went to a monetary.
I kind of want a motion first before, but, any public members like to speak to this, this topic?
Let's go, Ward.
Ward, don't be bashful this time.
Well, this is an area where I do have some, some experience, you know, when I was working for StopWaste.org, one of the things about conservation included water, included items that you could actually see a payback on. Low-flush toilets, low-flush, low-flow showerheads, faucets, et cetera, is one of those things. If you do it now, every time you use it after now, you're using less water. That's just the simple, simple answer of how this works. If you were flushed with four gallons before, now you flush with two, you are saving water now. The very day you put it in, you start saving water. That's as simple as it can possibly be. If it costs a few bucks to do that, in the long run, you save water.
Thank you. Yes. Great. I better time him.
No, I don't want to be very long.
He's a man of few words.
He talks about saving water on an acre. How big are your trees on that acre? If you've got, if you've got fifty trees on, on acre and you've got to water them, big trees, they take a lot more water than little flowers out of the pots.
I got a low-flush toilet that goes after the trees, I'm not worried about the trees.
I got two little cars too.
That's not on this subject, just stick to the subject name.
What, meaning I want to come up here, I want to tell you guys you did a good job on a bad, bad subject. I mean, nobody likes to save water and I think you're going to get us through it. I've got one thing to say, we can save water on a drought, but the trees are going to suffer from it and, and when we get more rain, we're going to have to water them back again. So this, this, this saving can't go on forever.
Well, I recognize that the same level won't, that's why I said, I haven't put this in a full presentation because those are the things that'll take in account. We're going to stay at there forever, but we're not going to go back to eighty-four hundred acre-feet a year either.
Well, you got me down for a fifty percent saving on that acre and we're going to make it, but it's going to be hard, it'll kill the lawn and it'll, it'll hurt some of the trees, but.
Save your trees.
Yeah.
Don't worry about the fifty percent.
We still think you did a good job.
Thank you.
Get close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other public comments? There being none then, any other board discussion on this?
Something just came to mind, when we were going to put sewers in the town, the guy who stopped sewers said that if we quit having septic tanks, all of our trees would die.
It is almost natural fact, it's.
Right, and so what I'm saying is, is when you save water, you do hurt the tree. But he didn't want sewers because it would, because he, all of his trees were being watered by the septic tanks. And so if you put less water in the septic tanks, you're going to hurt the tree too.
Strategically placed bleach line? Okay.
We know these pod roses, the black ones, would be better without septic tanks.
I don't know the trees.
Ah, yes, George.
There was talk about a voucher and I, and I just want to talk through that. If we hand out a voucher, Ace can't give them the price that we're giving. So they're getting a voucher on a retail rate because it's hit or miss, it's, they were, they were pretty clear when Jim talked to them and that's why I sent them out there. That's a program that would be really hard for them to administer and hard for us, so that's why they recommended, we can get you a really good deal and, and like Kevin said, it's probably going to be, we can probably buy twenty at a time when we know we have the need for it, that's not an issue, we're not going to have to probably have a hundred toilets in our warehouse to get this price.
Either that or if, if Ace just created a customer account that was for PID, when they bring in the voucher, just like Millard Glass has an account, just like PID has an account, and you buy things considerably less than just normal retail, if you go in and buy another bolt.
They don't, they don't stock this toilet and they don't want to stock it.
No, so it wouldn't be for that toilet.
They don't want to store it.
Oh, that was going to be my question.
They don't want to store it, they don't want to stock it.
See if we could just pay them all the twenty thousand and have them store it and we just come get them one at a time.
They don't have the space, they don't.
What about if you put the voucher only to Ace, would that help?
No, Ace is, Ace doesn't stock this toilet.
No, I know, but they could put it up, when somebody came in with a voucher, this way they would know that all the vouchers were going to come to them and when they came, so when somebody came in with a voucher, then they could special order.
We can try, I'm just relating what Jim's conversation was with them and giving you a workable option.
Do we have enough storage pa, space to handle a hundred toilets stacked up, floor to ceiling?
We could find it if we had to buy a hundred, but I don't think we have to buy a hundred.
You think we may be able to buy in smaller lots then?
Yes.
Twenty at a time or something?
Their big thing is, they don't want to store them.
Okay.
They don't want to stock them.
As long as they'll give us the discount and we can buy in the increments that we need and maybe we might not be buying just that exact model.
Stop with a bunch of toilets, they'll get moved out.
Well, right again, even though Director Kellogg's not in here at the moment, it says here, you know, for the drought reserve fund, we don't have a drought reserve fund apparently, Kevin, as far as, you know, an itemized bill, but what would pulling that twenty thousand dollars out of various areas do to the budget?
Would it just not have that, that availability of purchasing some maybe other.
At the end of the year.
Excuse me, right now, we're on June seventeenth.
Yeah.
Okay, there's thirteen more days in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always, there's room in the budget for items like this.
Okay.
There's, we put, we put.
Is it correct to say our expenses are below budget at this point in the year?
Yeah, our expenses are below budget.
Didn't you say that there was a twenty in the drought? I thought you said that.
I, no, I'm not, but it's close. We had three hundred and some thousand in there, but I know it's not so.
Is that, is that our not a rainy day fund?
Yep.
Okay.
This year's fund?
Well, you, you know, thank God we have Feather River Hospital here and I'm really thankful over the last few times that I've used their toilets quite frequently, but more than I had ever planned on. But, you know, I have no idea on their budget or any of that, they're asking here for any help that we can give them, but I know on the senior citizen center, they certainly need some help in that category and they apparently have seven and, I don't know if it would help our water, but it would help their septic systems.
And maybe all these little restaurants in town, you know, the mom, pop stores, some of them and.
But that's a where we'd have to determine what it, I'm going to interrupt you, what is public. If they have, if they have a sign only for customer use, well, that puts it out of the public, but like I know Cozy Diner doesn't have that.
No.
Still public.
Still public access.
Well, yeah, but restrooms are only for the pub, for the customer.
No, that's a public toilet.
Public access.
Yeah, that's the way, what I think.
Well, the way, the way I read this motion, we're letting, we're just going to let staff take over and do the applications and the verification program. And I think they sort of know how we feel.
They got to change it.
Right? So you can, what, whatever system you come up with would be, and we won't, we won't come back for our approval, right?
No, it won't.
Yeah, that's.
And I would, he would request you change the motion to funding a toilet purchase program, not a rebate program.
And I also just, I also understand from the CFO that it's not going to crap our budget, like you were saying, there's only thirteen days left anyway. How much carryover do you think we'll have on our budget? You don't know yet.
Okay, I move approval to transfer twenty thousand from the drought reserve fund to fund a toilet purchase plan, program for PID customers with facilities that have public access on a first come, first serve basis and direct staff to develop application forms and a verification process for administering the program.
I'll second.
Is that the way you want it?
I, okay.
You can amend the motion if you have thought.
Now, I would like to try. I would like to amend the motion to say that we transfer whatever amount of money is going to be needed for the price of the toilets and taxes to purchase one hundred toilets. There not being a second?
Because we don't, we don't know, we may not have to buy them.
I know, but I want to buy a hundred.
Well, you do.
You know, just that many more out in the, in the, in the marketplace.
If we have a screaming response to this program.
Talk about it again.
We'll probably come back to the board and see if you want to buy them.
Maybe showerheads. Okay.
Died for lack of a second.
That's what I said, I was quick on it.
Good.
Um, any, any further discussion, comments? Would the public like to comment in regard to this issue? Public says, get this job done.
Yes, but.
Thank you. Therefore, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
The vote passes four one with Director Kellogg in dissent. Thank you. Item, okay, we are, we are going to do this, we're going to go to item, we're going to skip D and E for right now and move to item seven and get rid of the committee reports. Most, most, some of those have already been handled because of the lengthy discussions we've had, but we'll get through.
Excuse me, can you put it off with the D and E?
The what?
The D and E, you can put those off now and go to the reports out.
Oh, I think this is going to take us five, seven, ten minutes to get through the reports.
And then you're going to do the D and E after that?
Yes. I, I didn't really realize anybody was, was hanging around for that because it's a closed session then, then open. But we'll do the committee reports now, first one, Larry?
Lafco.
Lafco.
Okay, we met at, on Thursday, June the fourth and, see, I'm trying to remember what we did. We did.
Passed the budget.
Right, we passed the budget and then also we, the city of Oroville, Orowindah Road annexation four was, action was taken, the protest hearing did failed and so therefore it, the annexation took place and, and then also Oroville changed, because of this annexation, they had changed their sphere of influence and we, because the property was fully developed already, we waived the, it was the first time we've done it, we waived the sphere service fees of twenty-some thousand dollars. It's on, it didn't send a precedence that we look at each one based on its own merit. And then Cal Lafco has requested that our executive officer, Steve Lucas, be allowed to be the beaut, executor officer for Cal Lafco and, and they will reimburse three thousand a year to cover his expenses for doing this. And he was a deputy officer, now he'll be the full executive officer of it and it's very, it's helping, being associated with Cal Lafco is really helping us promote Lafco in Buick County and that's why the commission agreed to allow him to do this. And that was basically it and, and Bill and I are running for positions on the executive board in, for the next year. He's counties and I'm special districts. And if I get it, it'll be my third term and if he gets it, it'll be his second, but his is consecutive. That's Lafco.
Thank you, you're still up to bat with Paradise Lake Recreation Committee?
Okay, that one, that was a very fast meeting, huh?
That was pretty quick.
Yeah, really quick. Okay, where is it? Paradise Lake, okay. We did, let's see, what is it? I'm trying to think what it was. The, we had reports on the Buick Fire Safe Council grant and.
Did you want to tell the board anything about that?
We covered it with the board on the MOU.
Oh, MOU, okay.
And we did the MOU last month.
Right, and then the, the North Lake boats launch?
Yeah, those were more for the committee's information.
That's for the committee, right.
Board was up speed on them.
Right, we're up speed, yeah, so may, and then we discussed Kids' Bat Fishing Day and of course, sales are way up because now that we're open year-round, our sales are really booming. I just hope we don't have too much business for it and, and of course we.
I hope we're, are we, Kevin, are you keeping track of costs as best you can?
Okay, because I, I think we're going to need that to decide whether we raise fees next year. And that was basically it, anything you would like to add?
Director Kellogg? Kellogg?
No, I, I thought it was a very quick and good meeting and we had lots of good news for what's going on at the lake and how well things are doing. Only thing is the easement, we talked about that going into the lake, I don't know if we have anything progressed on that, George? Easement for the new.
No, it's still, it's still in Sierra Pacifics, they're working through their calculations to figure out what the price would be. So when they come up with a price and an alternative, then it'll come to this board in closed session as a real property negotiation.
Okay.
But they, they have to come up with a price, they're, they're not opposed to it at all, they're, they're willing, but they have to assess their timber value and, and look at their operations before they can tell us what the price would be. So they're working on that.
Do they want us to buy more than just the easement or?
We'll see. They may.
Okay, that's the lake committee meeting.
Okay, the Water Conservation Committee, Director Flesher, the chairperson?
Yes, as you mentioned, on the agenda, we've covered the water conservation and Georgia Lindali talked about the water supply, it is a report, number seven. Number seven on our agenda was the Buick County Water Conservation Fair and Manager Barber discussed this and it's the one put on by the County Office of Emergency in the Kmart parking lot and last month and was quite well received. George, right?
I'm, it was really well received.
Yeah, well received on here. And then Mark Dale gave a report and they've got some outdoor landscape videos that will be put out where people can take a look at them and see what they're going. And then we had a discussion regarding gray water systems that Director Kellogg put on. Would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, a little bit. It was just mostly for information that I part got off of the internet. I'm not suggesting that the district change its position, which is there, I was suggesting that possibly on our webpage, we would put information or refer to possibly the things on the internet that make sense. There's a lot of things there, but we have to refer for our customers maybe could ask. There's an association in Health Pro that actually is, I should give this to board after the meeting. Any rate, they work with gardening clubs and so forth on using gray water. So, and I mentioned putting a brick in the toilet and Jim Pastorelli took, got after me because he says, what, what, you put a brick, what kind of brick? And I said, after the meeting, I said, well, Jim, a good brick, you know, not just a, any common brick, but a, you know, good solid brick in the toilet. So we, that got a laugh down, out of it. But that's all it was about, is to try to have the district put some information on the webpage that, that would show that the district is actually interested in gray water, but we don't have any regulations, anything to do with it. The town has, I looked, I had part of the presentation was the town's law and basically it's talking about production things. It's not talking about taking water out of the washing machine and putting it in the tank, but there is caution in this gray water information, say, don't do that when you're cleaning your underwear, you know, you might pollute the water you're putting out. Some pretty common sense things. But it's, it's things that people are probably starting to do already in town, I would think. That was all of gray water. Thank you.
Words of member of that committee, anything else you'd like to talk about? Real quick. Congratulations on your garden club tour, really a very beneficial time for doing that. And our next meeting will be August the 13th at 9:00 a.m. George, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I didn't think of that.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Duncan. Uh, the next item...
Flesher.
Yes, he, he always gives these reports. Uh, next item is the Ad Hoc Negotiating Committee. Larry and I met with the grievance team from the, from the union in May. It was in regard to step three grievance of an employee matter. Uh, they appealed the decision previously and they, we denied their, their appeal. And that was the extent of that meeting.
Can we ask any questions?
Let, let me give an admonition. This is a matter that's gonna come before the board July...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
My, I'm not gonna...
I would encourage you...
You have to worry about...
I would encourage you not to get into specifics.
Well, my specifics is, I didn't know we had an ad hoc negotiating committee. When was it formed? It was formed by...
It was formed at a previous, uh...
No, it was formed by the president, my request.
When?
Yeah.
Shouldn't it have been brought before the board and were appointed before the years?
When the grievance was brought.
Not an ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee doesn't have to come before the board.
Okay. Now, I was made aware that it's been almost two months since you met and there was no report to the board until the night. I asked Dustin and he said, we didn't know the agenda.
In May? I can't remember when we met with him.
There's been email.
Pardon? Do you remember, Larry?
I, I, I think it was just before the last meeting and for some reason it didn't get on the...
No, I, I purposely didn't put on it because I think personnel matters and grievances, any opportunity is fraught with problems to have an open session and I'm always trying to protect the district from a director saying something not correct, as well as protecting the rights of the employees because they have a right to appeal their situation to the full board. And if there was any discussion about it without them present, that would not be fair to them. So it, it wasn't on the agenda for that purpose.
Okay. So why is it on there now?
Direction of legal counsel.
Legal, okay.
My problem with it is that it's a committee that should report to the board even though you say nothing about the particulars involved, at least tell you, tell us that you met and it's been discussed. We've heard rumors about this for a couple of months, the board members at least.
Couldn't be a couple of months.
And didn't know what it was or anything else. Didn't know what kind of committee, met or anything else. And you could have made it a closed session item and informed us that way to make sure...
Couldn't have been a closed session item.
No, can't be.
Oh, okay. But that's where my problem is. I think as to the way the district functions, the committees have to report to the board.
And my...
Deciding for...
Would report to the board at the meeting that this substance was taken up.
That's all my questions.
Thank you, Bill. Then there's a, an item that is not on here because we just met yesterday and they...
It's there.
Excuse me?
It's there. Five. Buick County Special District.
I don't have a five.
It's on the printed, not the agenda.
Oh, it's on the printed.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Good, I did get listed.
You got a flag now.
You're out there now.
I thought they just left me off because they wasn't, wasn't sure I'd show up this time.
Right.
Uh, anyhow, Buick County Special District's Association met yesterday and it was a, kind of a sparse meeting. We did have a, a quorum, we conducted our business, not much business. Uh, we're, we're being asked to join the Special District's Association, Special District's... Yeah, I guess Association.
California Special District.
California.
California Special Districts. CSDA?
Yep.
Okay. As a, as a full member, we're kind of a quasi-member now and, but they would like our money.
Yeah, what's the difference between quasi and full member?
Well, quasi is that there are, you know, maybe there's two or three or four of the members of the Buick County Special District Association who are members of the California Special District Association. So through them, we have access and get information and, and can get speakers and, you know, educational materials and things like that. And they would like us to close the loop and just join it and, and pay their dues. There didn't seem to be a lot of great support for that, but there was going to be some further investigation to see what the cost would be and whether, and they may bring it up another time, might die or it might get voted down, but that was about the only business that we handled.
Wouldn't the dues be based on the revenue of Buick County Special Districts?
Not necessarily. This is a different type of membership.
Oh, different type, okay.
And it's a chapter.
Oh, okay, chapter.
So that means that they would be paying us.
Right.
The other issue was the general membership meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. The general, well, okay.
We set the price.
Yeah, we set the price at, what was it?
$10.
Ludicrous deal, it's a $10 deal.
Per person.
Uh, per person. And it is a lunch me, it's going to be a lunch meeting, it's gonna be held on a Thursday again in October, I think.
October 15th.
October 15th? And it, is it being held at the Park and Recs?
Good thing they're here, Larry.
It is, it is gonna be held at Paradise Lake unless the weather is an issue, then it'll be moved to Parks and Recs.
Oh, boy, I'm glad you guys are here to help me for this. And then, um, so we, but our next meeting, are we still having our next meeting in September?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
At the rec center.
And that is at the rec center, um, for whatever day, I don't know.
September 15th, Tuesday.
Oh, it is a September 15th. Well, thank you, Larry.
Would you like to pass this report to Larry?
I'll ask if Larry's got anything to add when I'm done.
Anything I am five, Larry.
And on December 15th, we're gonna have it on a Tuesday year, PID.
And then they're talking, we're, we're talking about having the, the, the membership me, or the entire general meeting one time a year instead of twice a year. And there, that's the end of my story.
Right, and you might say that we're going, we have $5,000 in our bank account and that's, that's where the subsidy is coming from because it's gonna cost more than $10 per person for the monthly.
Well, it is subsidized, yes. One of the reasons for doing that was to encourage...
Attendance.
Attendance and to encourage members to bring a guest to that event. Now, we are going to back up to item 6D.
Finance Committee?
There is, there was. Did you want seven?
Oh, Finance Committee.
There was.
Where?
That's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
It's on here and it's tomorrow.
Five, five got moved to six.
Yeah.
Where, where are you guys looking at this?
The one that they gave us.
Oh, I'm operating off the one I brought?
Yep. Yeah, there's one.
I know you did, I threw it away. I think, I, I, I got confused, I thought I switched. Okay, so do we have a...
Well, that's what I said, I have a light and a...
Okay. Well, I can report on what we're going to do.
Are you? Yeah, go ahead. Maybe you know more rather than you did this one.
All right, do we have any objections to me moving back to item 6D now in the closed session?
Let's do it.
Okay. Item 6D is a closed session, public employee performance evaluation, uh, according to government code, section 54957B, in regard to our general manager. At this point, we're going to recess from this, this meeting and go into closed session. When we come back out of closed session, then we will announce what we can announce.
Mr. President, two items. One is you can, we should allow for public comment before we go into closed session. And two, Manager Barber in his memorandum to the board asked that the board consider kicking item E, consideration of compensation to next month. So, members of the public, if you're inclined as a board to consider compensation next month, you may want to decide that now before you go into closed session.
Oh, that's a good idea. The reason he wants to do it is because then it'll coincide with our financial person, our CE, Seattle or... So I guess that's a good idea to decide that now so that they won't be waiting to see if we're gonna do it.
Okay. I had, um, oh, I know, it's because it's on, it's on this, this is what I was looking for. Okay. George did give us a, a, a letter here and asked us, uh, in regard to, uh, looking at his contract, that he would like the opportunity for the, the board to consider increasing his salary or one-time performance or consider whatever we're going to do in regard to his contract. That we have that discussion tabled until the July board meeting and we would entertain then both George's compensation contract and Kevin's compensation contract at the same time. One of the, there's various reasons for that, but that was what was requested. As a, and that's a good idea, as a consideration to the public so you don't have somebody hanging around here for maybe an hour and then expecting us to move into a discussion about the, uh, the salary and be disappointed if we don't. We will discuss this section of this item now. Uh, the board will vote on whether we're going to do that or proceed on with tonight and that way the public will know whether they want to hang around for that or not. So.
Now, is this the, is, now Kevin, under his new contract, he works for us now rather than for you?
No, he always has. He's always been under contract.
Oh.
Do you remember all that money you awarded him on his contract last year?
Yeah, but I was thinking that something changed last year.
Well, what changed was I do an evaluation of him and then you have an opportunity to review that evaluation and also give input on his performance in a closed session next month. So that way, if we continue with this going forward, we do my evaluation in June, his in July, consider compensation for the executive team all in, all at one meeting.
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure we're gonna have a valuation of Kevin in July.
You work with George.
Right.
Well, I would like to have a, I think it would be interesting to have Kevin's comment. You want to be tied to this guy here like that? So...
Do you need a motion?
Well, you know, I think that's kind of what we've been talking about, but I think that the, I, I completely realize that they are an executive team and in fact, when he talked to Kevin or the CEO about the toilet reimbursement, that was part of that team working together, but I think they should be evaluated separately like you're talking about and their salary should be discussed separately. Well, I think.
I, I don't know if you're, if you're assuming that they have to both get the same increase.
No.
They're gonna be discussed one right after the other, but this person for that, that person for maybe a completely different product, just so you're not, not thinking that it means that they're tied into the same compensation.
I was, I was on the field.
We would have that discretion.
Yeah, in other words, George will evaluate even June and then we will come through in a closed session and evaluate like we're doing George this evening in July. And then the salaries or adjustments or whatever it is monetary wise would be on the table, but yours would be completely separate from George's, you know yours.
Yes. We're not...
But done at the same time.
We're not turning into a bargaining unit.
Are you sure?
Yeah. We gotta watch him.
A lot of it is about this board, this is one of the things you're charged with. So by spacing a month apart, you either set an expectation with whatever you do with me ahead of time and he's got a month to sit on that or not or whatever. And then you as a board, I want a free discussion so that there's no obligation in one direction or another, it's all on the table at one time.
Right.
In the same meeting.
Okay, I move approval with the, the general manager's consent to consider any bonus payments or changes to salary in July of each year in, in coordination with the same consideration for the district CFO.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, any, any, any discussion on this, comments? We had a little bit from Director Flesher.
You understand what?
Yeah, I understand what they, they said, yeah, so I don't have any comment.
Go.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, thank you. You'll, you'll recall that this came up previously, what, a year and a half or two ago, whatever it was, and there was a room full of people here that wanted to speak to George's pay, most of which agreed he's doing a good job and did in fact deserve more, but the timing was, was bad. And I thought there were gonna be three other people here besides me to speak to this too, and they're not. But I pretty much know the sort of attitude of how this goes and that's, we're gonna sell less water, we're in a drought. So our income at PID is going to be down. I, I say our income, I feel like I'm part of this place, you know? And when our income is down, it's probably not such a good idea for the public to find out, oh, oh, they're gonna raise his salary when they're not making very much money? The timing seems bad. Not that there's anything wrong with the way he's managing this agency, you know, that's pretty good, but the timing would seem bad. So, so, 'cause we gotta talk a rate increase, we're gonna lose money when we don't sell enough water, right? I mean, that's gotta come up. Everybody knows it's gotta come up somehow. We gotta be able to pay our expenses. I, I didn't think this through with somebody else, but I heard it, so I just want to pass this on. So it's, it's secondhand. Assuming we manage what we're doing drought-wise for the next three months and we make our 36%, he's the leader of this pack. Some of the money that is in the drought fund, however that's identified, should be paid to him as a bonus for leading us through this and getting us fully in compliance with the, what the state expected, instead of a salary increase. When people are gonna think, you give a salary increase and then you raise our rates, that's what that's for. you give a salary increase and then you raise our rates, that's what that's for. This would look like, wow, he did such a great job. We have this other money here, let's give him a bonus. That's the way it came out.
Thank you, Ward. Any other public comments in regard to this topic? They're being done back to the, yes?
I'm a little bit of a fellow. You have two individuals with one agreement, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They're not employees, they're
Excuse me? I had a man with Kevin, a friendly agreement. He would hire him. That's good.
It goes both ways.
I'm not, I'm not.
The last financial guy previous to Kevin was that way, but
Seems like Kevin's getting reviewed twice, reviewed by you, this is not a four.
That is true, that's according to his contract.
Double jeopardy.
Double scrutiny is what we've decided we need with Kevin, though.
Kevin, we have to watch Kevin.
Watch your back, or she's never listening.
All right, thank you.
Good point, good point.
Any further comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Did I get your vote, Bill? I didn't hear down there.
I didn't say no.
Well, it would be an abstain if I, I don't know, you called me on that one time.
Change, it's 5-0.
Oh, okay. Then, I
And for the official record.
The official record.
As well, because it is an agreement, and it has to be agreed on both sides.
Well, I wouldn't like a bait and switch tactic if you said you wanted it.
But it should be on the record that I am.
Okay, thank you, I didn't think about that part. Okay, so now, with us doing our little loop session there, we are going to go into closed session for the performance evaluation of the general manager. At the end of that time, we will come back out in here, we will reconvene, and then, since we have agreed not to consider his compensation adjustment during Part 6E of that, then we will just discuss that we accomplished our mission and had our review, and then we'll move on to the next agenda items. That's what we're going to do.
Do you need me in there, or would you like me to stay out?
Want me to keep score?
Oh, yes, you were in there last year. You were our scorekeeper, okay.
The scorekeeper, we don't have to do the secondary.
Bring the financial man in. All right, we'll see who hangs around. Not a closed session at whatever time that is. Ugly, 10:51, I think, 10:52.
Yeah.
And we have nothing to report. No action taken. We're moving now into item 8, general manager's report.
Yes, you have my written report. We did, I reported earlier, we're looking like a 45 percent reduction in May, and I can tell you that we're headed into June, I think we're going to be in really good shape relative to meeting the district-wide goal of 36 percent. Our treatment plant, we're at June 17th, our treatment plant has hardly ever exceeded 6 million gallons a day, in June with 90-degree heat. That normally means 8, 9, 10 million gallons a day. So, it's not just May from the weather, it is, it's still going on, people are responding, and it's going to keep going.
How many gallons a day, 6,000?
6 million, less than 6 million, a lot of them are
6 million.
Four, eight to five something. I wanted to point attention to the reservoir elevation chart. You see the little uptick, I mentioned it in my report, PG&E had a flume issue, they needed to do it in repair. They called us to ask us if they could spill into our reservoir, because for them to turn off their canal many miles away, it's really problematic from an operational standpoint, so it's better for them to just spill the water while they work down, immediately downstream. Of course, we said, thank you very much, we'd love to help you out.
They gave us water?
They gave us water.
They had to twist your arm, right?
But they did also call Bob Fortino, who they have a contract with, and said, hey, we have, you know, we're spilling, do you want to take your allotment now? So, 300 acre feet plus or minus of that, 500 or so is Del Oro Water's delivery.
That's reasonable, though.
Yeah, and he gets the benefit of not paying generation charge.
Of course, Del Oro will just have a higher evaporation account.
Yeah.
Because we're storing it longer.
Yeah, we're, we've got that contractually set.
George, you know that powerhouse that they build in Tottown? Do they still put water through that? It dumps into Butte Creek, Little Butte Creek.
I think so, but I'm not sure. I think it does. They made some operational changes, so they no longer diverting from Butte Creek, higher upstream, and generating power that way. But they're still generating through Hendrix Canal.
When did we have those two storms?
June 4th was one of them, Sprinkle.
It was this month?
Yeah, and there were some in May, too.
I know we had those two in a row that
We had a week of
That were gulliwalking.
Thunderstorms, yeah, they were pretty good.
They were May, or June?
One was, at the end of May, one was June 4th, or just before it, or
I think that helped, that was my mom's birthday, June 4th.
June, graduation.
June 3rd was Friday.
I think June 4th was Thursday.
You're right. You're right, because 6th, we did my mom's party.
As I reported earlier, the 20 percent letters went out. We have, we got a great response, lots of phone calls, staff did a great job dealing with that stressful situation. I listened a lot, I got some of the more irate directed to me, dealt with them. For the most part, it's been a pretty positive response from most of the customers, especially the ones that were either meter shop or Keith's going out to do a visit on. So, we are offering outdoor water audits, and that's helped some. I reported at the conservation committee, but he went out on one house, they got the letter, and I can't cut anymore, and Keith worked them through the math and the meter, and their lawn was less than half of this room, and they were putting 2,400 gallons of water a day on it.
What?
Yeah. So, they got a really good education and a really positive experience out of it, so they shouldn't have any trouble meeting their, meeting their goal.
What did you water for to get that?
Yeah, it was, it was long, and it was every day last year.
Wow.
So, a couple of things coming forward, we've got the ongoing letters worked out through, who's our? Infocent.
Oh, Infocent.
For the monthly reports to the 20 percenters, so we've got that kind of dialed in to the format. Wording is almost there, ready to, they'll be ready to go out in July. Our billing, starting in, with July billing, will show 2013 versus your use this year, and 2014 won't be on there at all, so people will be able to see what, how they're relating to their 2013 demands, so we're taking care of that. Something else. Oh, and we, as of this morning, have 1,710 aquahawk signups, and I think that's considerably more
Jumped up like 700.
From just when the board went out, so
Are they the 20 percenters?
A lot of them are the 20 percenters. We got some through the garden club, we got some signed up at the Butte County event. Christie went earlier in the week and spent some time in the morning at Tri-County's bank, and signed people up there. And then we will be offering signups through our party in the park tents or exhibits. So
I think Mark's going to be offering signups also down at Norback, which would be some of our contractors, landscapers.
Yeah, if we can get staff, we've really, just to be careful, we need a PID staff member to sign people up on aquahawk, so Mark and Tony don't have access to our records.
He could tell them where to go, like I did this morning.
Yeah, we maybe will have someone down there doing it also at the event, we'll work that out. So, lots of, lots of time and effort on this drought, but as I said earlier, I think it's going to pay dividends going forward in what we can think we need to do. 10 years ago, did I think we could conserve our way out of water supply projects? No, but, and I also don't think we could have without our meter program, so it was a big investment, but it's paying dividends. There are so many places that I keep reading about, that, City of Sacramento, other places that do the meter readings every other month like we used to, and they're hiring extra people as water cops. City of SAC went from 19 last year to 47 water cops this year. But they have a bunch of un-metered accounts, too, so that's their only way of going about it.
Did you keep track of how many calls you had?
No, we were too busy. It was non-stop.
How many letters did you send out?
It was a couple thousand.
20 percent of 10,000.
Yep, yep, lined up at the
I wonder how many calls they got.
So, I assume they probably came in, kind of PO'd and hurt that they would get the letter.
I think there was a few upset, there was many that were more concerned and worried. You know, I had one really nice gentleman that, you know, some of these people, and I understand why they're taking it the way they're taking it, but he was almost in tears that he was going to have to let his landscape that he, you know, shuffled in with his walker, and he's been working his yard for 40 years, and it's beautiful, and he's got his plants and trees, and he doesn't want to lose them, and, you know, so, when I was able to sit down and tell him, you know, follow all these guidelines, get your timers, let your lawn go, and save those trees, and he went, his wife even said, he didn't sleep all last night. So, that's the unfortunate side, but it turned out positive.
I got a call from a lady that's in a big apartment complex, and they didn't get letters, right?
No, that was multifamily.
They, their landlord gave them all a copy of the letter he did, he must have got, and is telling them that they have to cut back. And he's threatening, if they get three, he's issuing citations.
On his own.
If they get three of them, he's going to, he says he's going to kick them out.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, that's what I told the lady, I says, hey, that, what he's doing is not in our regulations and everything, and knowing how the courts deal with tenants, I don't think he has a leg to stand on.
You're not going to get a share.
She was really worried, though, because evidently, he caught her water, with a hose watering a plant that was dying between eight, and his thing is from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, you can't water. And he caught her watering a plant in a pot with a hose.
8:10 AM.
At 8:00 in the morning, and gave her a citation.
Okay, thank
I think that's all I got.
Thank you, George. We're going to move on to item number nine, legal report. Couldn't find the number.
Curtailment, I missed it. You've probably heard about this or read about it, we, last Friday, the water board issued a pre-1914 curtailment. It's not quite unprecedented, but it's only happened once in 1977, and it happened on a much smaller scale. They curtailed 1914 through 1903, and Paradise Irrigation District has a right, I use that term loosely, it's not actually a right, come to turn it, it turns out, but according to the water board, they believe it's a right, that's listed among the 120-some-odd rights that were curtailed in that chunk of time. So, we had a call, was that yesterday or a couple days ago, with Paula Wayland, come to find out, this is kind of a quirk in the law. When you do, when you did the Megalia raw water bypass, that's a new point of diversion and a new point of re-diversion under your water rights, depending on what water right you're talking about. So, there's 2009 legislation that required, conservatively required you to file a statement of diversion and use, basically as if you had a water right, a new water right, until the water board approved your new point of diversion and your new point of re-diversion. So, we've been, the water board had that petition to clean up our new project, basically, and they've been sitting on it for years. I think we submitted it in 2008, thereabouts. And meanwhile, we've been submitting these statements of diversion and use at the Megalia raw water bypass. So, the water board got a little confused, they thought, rather than that's just a new point of re-diversion or diversion, they thought it was a new standalone right that we were claiming, and it is in fact not. So, we've got a letter and a curtailment certification form that we're going to submit to the water board, trying to explain exactly what we're doing. There will be, in my, I think this is true, there's going to be more deeper curtailments, probably next month, so I may, next board meeting, I may have more to report. George, primarily staff, I've kind of done my part, we've been looking through the records of the date of first use of the district's pre-1914 right. You look at the Butte Creek adjudication, which it is listed in, all it says is before 1900, so it's not very, not very definitive. So, we continue to try to track that down. I suspect it's an old mining right that converted to ag that the district acquired, so it's probably 1850s, maybe 1860s vintage, but we're trying to track that down. Next item, any questions?
They had that on Channel 12 also, and are we right at the bottom? In fact, I think they interviewed George. If they didn't, if they didn't interview you, they made a statement of what you told them, but I think they interviewed you.
I did, I did talk to them, and, no, I actually talked to the Associated Press, and they probably pulled
They pulled it out.
Pulled my quote from that.
There was a whole list of them, PID was Paradise Irrigation District on the bottom, and you answered that quite well, George.
Thank you.
Next item, there's a trailer bill, a budget trailer bill, floating through Sacramento, there's a lot of them, actually, but one is kind of received the attention of Aqua and my office. It would require mandatory consolidation with kind of a potentially disadvantaged, a neighboring water system that's dilapidated, basically. And the water board has a list of about 400 of these such entities that would be eligible for consolidation, so I circulated that to staff, and it looks like we don't have any of these targeted communities that are really nearby, at least none that we're aware of. But the bill is concerning for a couple reasons. The obvious one is, you've got a healthy district like PID, where, you know, our system meets Department of, or Safe Drinking Water Standards, you know, it's maintained, good operators and such. You can imagine being forced to take in a dilapidated system, you'd have concerns about cost and assuming a liability. I think there's water right concerns, because all of a sudden, you're, you may be serving a new area with a water right that should be for the benefit of your existing customers. The second concern with the bill is just more process. The Brown administration seems to have fallen in love with these budget trailer bills, and it's concerning because it's, they're starting to put kind of substantial policy matters as budget trailer bills, as kind of an in-run around the typical legislative process, and the budget trailers are adopted relatively quickly, there's not a lot of opportunity to lobby, you know, you can't really call your legislator and say, listen, I don't like this for these reasons. like this for these reasons." You could do that when there's the normal legislative process, but you can't really do that for a budget trailer bill. So you've got a lot of, this is one of those situations where it's good to have, to be a member of Aqua, because they have kind of the statewide credibility. And Aqua and other similar type associations like CSDA and League of Cities and county equivalents, they're kind of banding together and telling the administration, whether we love the bill or hate the bill, we don't like the process because we think you ought to vet these policy matters through the normal legislature. So anyhow, that's all I have. Any, any questions?
Cal Lafco had a neutral position on it, and at our last board meeting, we changed our position to a no position, which means that each Lafco could do whatever they wanted. And our local Lafco sent a letter of protest, and they're mainly concerned that letting the Water Board, who are not elected officials, make policies, which is, you know, when you got somebody who's appointed, they don't, they don't have to watch what they do.
I'm really surprised that Cal Lafco wouldn't take an opposed on that.
We tried, we tried.
They're in surrounding you.
We tried to take an opposed on it, but there were some, some of the big, we, now that we're regional, if any region, all the four people in their region, if they are against it, then we can't, we can't take a opposed, opposed position on it. I know Steve wanted us to do one, and we, Lafco did do an opposed, but, and I think Butte County did too. But, but Cal Lafco, because of our regional thing, now we, we can't, just, before, the big ones used to, the little guys had no say. Now at least we've got a little bit of a say.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to staff and billing reports, see if we can get through these quickly. Do any of the directors have any items of interest or comments or questions they would like to bring up based upon those staff bill, staff reports and the billing report? I'll ask directors volunteer. Anyone want to speak to those, any items there?
Well, as usual, the staff report, field operations report is really well done. It explains a whole bunch of things. I looked at it earlier, and I think it's excellent.
Did you see the big thing on the lake?
What?
Yeah.
Much further we're ahead on the lake because of the annual.
Yeah, very, very good.
It could also be because it's one of the few lakes around here that's full.
That's got wa-, that's got fish in it.
We'll take all that we're told.
You heard what, uh, Rec District said about the, they had trophy fish in there, and they died. Nobody caught them and they died.
Floated to the top.
Floated to the top.
Oh, at the park.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 the duck pond.
They had trophy fish in there, and they just can't make it.
I was down there with Tony though there one day, and the kids were just, we were just, weren't fishing, but the kids were just slaughtering them. They were lined up along the shore, they were just slaughtering left and right out there.
That's down at Roswell Park, is that right?
I'll make a motion to accept the staff and billing report as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, passes five zero. Treasurers, treasures.
Board reset.
No. Treasurers memo.
Get my written memo. So the cash position we're at is three points, almost four million. All of our debt has been, the debt service for the year has been paid currently. We have a budget meeting scheduled for Monday. We're not pushing the budget through just to push it through because we have so many different decisions to make on, not only on projects and what the cost of the projects are going to be for the current year, but also rates. And we want to get an idea of what, what we're going to look at for rates so that we know kind of where to kind of budget ourselves at for any of those projects also. So how far do we push projects off? Are we doing no projects this year? Are we going to do some projects at the end of the year, that type of thing? We will be having, our auditors will be out in July first to do inventory, and then we'll obviously be doing the audit later on in the year after we get things cleaned up. I did go to training, I went to Philadelphia for the GFOA annual conference that I go to every year. This conference was very good, very timely. They actually had a water revenue class, which I felt was, this was the first time they actually did anything on water, and the room was packed, so people were sitting on the floor, there were not enough chairs for everybody. The one thing that I did realize is that we're not unique here in California. Everybody around the country is, is dealing with variable water rates, water revenue. Everybody is, it doesn't matter if you're getting, just like Texas right now, they're getting so much water they can't handle it, but it means that people aren't turning sprinklers on. So water revenue, and the graph was that you had water revenue that went like this, and now everybody's is like this.
For a while, they didn't have any. Texas didn't have any.
Right, and so they went through a drought, right, yeah. So they went through a drought, and no one's recovering from these droughts because, just like what we're doing with our customers, we're educating them, they're changing their ways, they're putting in drought tolerant landscaping. Things do not come back to normal, and things aren't going to come back to normal. So we're not unique here in California. We're unique in a way that we have to handle our rates, but even that, everybody's kind of, kind of formulating their rate studies to handle California's process. So it's a cost-based study, a cost of service is what they call it, so it was very good. The, I went to one, a class on the Obamacare or the Affordable Care Act and about Cadillac tax, and there's a lot of cities out there that are going to be paying a lot of money in 2018 based on their insurance or offering to their employees. One, one was, was a small town of thirty-five hundred was going to be paying four hundred thousand dollars just in the Cadillac tax in 2018.
Are we?
We will be if we offer the classic based on the projections that they're looking at in 2018.
Eighteen.
And we, as a district, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that would be included in the individual rate because JPIAs would be the first level of having to pay that tax. And so since the way we've structured our health care, if somebody picked that Cadillac plan, they're going to be paying the-
It'll be added to the premium, it'll be extra.
Large premium.
So if they're Cad-
We're still not paying.
It'll just be added to the premium, so the premium just exactly go up by that portion.
We're still not showing that we're paying that.
Way back, way back up in the front, I was going to ask this question, but I didn't want to ask it with all the, ask that particular question with the public here like that, just to keep them lit on. But there was saying on our insurance, I forgot what it was, I have to look at the thing, on the eleven months, what kind of a percentage is Obamacare caused that to go up?
That's hard to tell.
Have you had it once before?
It's, it, you're going to, that would be a question you could ask JPIA. They obviously, we, we don't know exactly what drives our rates unless we're in the room with them, because they subsidize rates based on some of their-
Was there any discussion in Philly if the Supreme Court rules against subsidies and all of that type of stuff, what would it do to an outfit like us on our insurance?
If they, if they-
Supreme Court-
Against, unravels the Obamacare?
It'll unravel it.
There was no discussion of that. I doubt that would ever happen at this point. I think it's pretty well put in place. It's, I, I just don't see that happening.
Well, you know, the interesting part, I did a little study on it. You know, the Republicans for years wanted it to fail. And now they're between a rock and a hard spot, because all of a sudden, these seventeen billion people are going to be out of insurance, so they can't let the thing fail. So don't wish for something you may get.
The other class that I went to was on, well, I went to a lot, but another one was on reserving, and it was a really good class based on emergency reserves and about making sure that you have those in place and about justifying those reserves. The person who put it on was actually the budget director for the city of Baltimore, and he talked about how Baltimore is kind of flip-flop where they actually ask you to spend the, well, they ask, they see that you have reserves and you're healthy, but they want you to spend them on the public today. They don't want you to save them. So there's a lot of justification going, "We have a hundred million dollars in the bank, why, why are you cutting our services? Just spend it on us." And so there's a lot of justification of why you have these reserves, setting goals, setting limits, setting percentages of, of them. And they talked about, one of the things was the emergency reserve, that in a four-day span in Baltimore, they spent twenty million dollars on a riot. And that's how quickly those things can go, and about having those monies available and how you have them set aside for something, but you can't always earmark them for exactly what they're, what, what you have them there for because you don't know that a riot's going to happen that day. So it was a very good conference, got a lot out of it, and I'll take any questions.
You have anything for the finance committee?
I will. I'll have it either tomorrow or Friday.
Oh, okay, good.
Any questions? Doug, did you have something?
Yeah, I was going to ask, on our board member travel and education budget, that'll all disappear in thirteen days, is that right?
You're correct.
No.
No, it does, starts over. It resets.
Does it reset?
The travel and training portion will, will go away, and you'll have-
I had a note down that it did not reset, I, because it's, it was created because of the lack of, of the election. Maybe not, oh, so it's going to be a budget every year?
Yeah.
We set it up to, yeah.
Just a quick question, that's all.
You can take it back out during the budget process if you want, as a board.
It's all up to the board.
Do my toilets, wasn't it?
Are we going to take any action with Kevin's report?
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None, passes five zero. Directors' comments? Bill, would you like to start us off?
You know, from Tom, I think I've said enough tonight. I don't need to lighten up. I want to say that, that the board was fair and open, and we discussed it in a fair, for the most part, gentlemanly thing. I just, Ken, you caused me to have to go get my tums blown. Pretty ticked there for a while, and I guess I shouldn't have. Anyway, that's my comments.
Okay. Doug?
It's going to be a cold day at hell when I have to eat tubs because of you, Director Hunt. So just keep working on it, okay? I'm cool, calm, and collected. I just thrive on what we did tonight. We did a great job, I think.
Okay, I, I, I'll go ahead and we'll just keep moving down the row here. I'll give my comment. Yeah. Bill, I, I would suggest, you know, because there's, there's certain things you don't like, but I would suggest that you try to change them in advance. So if you want to place an item on next month's agenda to have the board convene, take an agenda, vote on the order that we should address the agenda items, vote on it, majority rules, and then we start our meeting, that's okay. But it's not our, it's not our policy. It's always been at the president's discretion to move things around for the convenience of visitors and public or the flow of the meeting. And so, you know, it can, we can change that though. We can change it to what, whatever the board wants, maybe, maybe we can't.
I'd like to go out of order a little bit. I think it was probably a little unclear, and, and the committee definitely has input, but it's not, it's not limited to the committee report. So when we have agenda items that a committee worked on, then they get that say during the process, whether it's after staff presentation, or maybe, maybe as the president, I'd suggest you be a little more formal, let staff make their presentation, and then if it, it's gone through a committee, then you turn it over to the committee for comments, and then start the process. Just my two cents.
Yeah, could be. But, you know, needless to say, you guys got to say everything that you wanted to say because, you know, that was the right thing to do for you to be able to present committee's opinions and what your opinions were, but I wasn't trying to control that input. So that's my only comment. Larry?
I just think that it amazes me that we get anything done. We're so, so different, and, and I think that makes us a good board.
Absolutely, I think so too. I just wanted to say, I got my brother-in-law signed up for Aqua Hawk, and what a great investment and effective tool that staff brought to us there. He was on it for about fifteen minutes, and he said, "Why does it look like I got fifteen gallons per hour on here? What's this mean?" And I said, "Well, you're using fifteen gallons per hour." And I said, "You've got a leak, there are no two ways about it." So he was using, he says, "How is it that I'm one guy," you know, and it's a normal-sized house, and he does like to irrigate a little heavy, but he's still just one guy. But he was using something on the order of like six hundred gallons a day. And I'm like, "It's not possible." Yeah, so there was, yeah, he didn't get a twenty percent letter, that's the weird part. It's, he hasn't gotten a twenty percent letter, but he was using like six hundred gallons a day, so I think it's pretty recent.
He was right on the edge.
Yeah, I don't think it was happening in 2013. But you could see when his sprinkler, when the, the house was sitting dormant and he's at work, he was using this fifteen, fourteen point nine six gallons just on the out. He says, "Why does it always say fourteen point nine six?" I said, "'Cause it's the same drip, it's the same leak, constantly." So tallied that out, that's like three hundred and fifty-four gallons, okay, on a twenty-four-hour period right there. When he turned his sprinklers on and ran them for twenty minutes, he would use something on the order of like two hundred and forty gallons, and his lawn's about one quarter the size of this room, and he was using like two hundred, and I'm like, "That's not," and I put on those little heads that, they're like, they do this roundabout thing, there's no way it's using two hundred and forty gallons on this little lawn that I did, and so I'm like, "Well then, now you've got a hole in the sprinkler system somewhere, so as soon as the water starts flowing through it, you're flowing water to China somewhere throughout the system." So, yeah, he found, so he found, like I said, within the first fifteen minutes of having this, he found out why, and he didn't even know what he was using the amount, he just pays the bill, a forty-five dollar bill, thinks that's what his water bill is, and doesn't even bother to look at units. Well, exactly, didn't bother, he's a single guy, he just figures forty-five was his water bill, and so he paid it. So what an effective tool that we've got if we can get more people on with it. It's just incredible. I found out, I, I told the guys in the meeting, I found out, I'm like fifty, I'm a top twenty percent in 2013. I was a big water user, but I knew I had a leak, so I found a leak in 2013, so. But had I had Aqua Hawk, I would have been able to tell that leak. It was a non-visible leak, and I would have known that I had it, so. That's it.
Thank, thank you very much.